Penn East representatives would like to end this meeting around 9 o'clock if possible. So we probably have a lot of questions. You ready, Joy?
Yeah.
Since this is a regular meeting, we're going to start officially. Notice of this meeting is posted on municipal bulletin board and forward to the Hopewell Valley News, Times, the Trentonian, and the Hopewell Express on September 15, 2014, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Meeting member Brandt.
Here.
Meeting member Lennon is not there. Meeting member Hart.
Here.
Meeting member Lester.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, indivisible in justice for all.
Just a number of housekeeping items. If you would like to speak, there's a sign up sheet outside. If you could please sign up, so we have a record of who you are. And I'd just like to thank the committee for another meeting tonight. Thank all of you for coming out. I know many of you have many meetings that you go to in the evening, so appreciate your coming here tonight. I also want to recognize a number of volunteers who work and serve on our various boards and committees. We have members here from the Environmental Commission, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Open Space Historic Preservation Commission. And if I've missed anybody, I apologize for that. It's hard for me to see you in the back there, but I think we have individuals here from a variety of nonprofit organizations as well, and it looks like people, representatives from other members of towns. PennEast Borough, I think, is here, and I thought I saw somebody from Hopewell Borough, so I appreciate your coming here as well tonight. We, as you know, we received notice of this from Penn East back in July that they were thinking of extending a pipeline through Hopewell Township. And we asked them at that point to join us and come and share their plans with you tonight, which they've done, and we appreciate that. This is the first of many meetings that they will be holding and that the Township Committee will be holding as well. So we will be asking them to share a presentation that they're going to be making, probably repeatedly, to groups over the next few months. And I'm going to introduce Alisa, and you can introduce your representatives, and then they're going to do a brief presentation, and then we're going to open it up to the public for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this is on. Okay, good evening, everyone. As Mayor just mentioned, my name is Alisa Harris. I'm from the PennEast Pipeline. The PennEast Pipeline is a group of members of the local distribution companies here in New Jersey and UGI Energy Services. We're a company out of Pennsylvania. I'm getting some interference. We'll start taking jewelry off soon. But we're here tonight to kind of talk to you, brief you about the project that we're proposing. It is a very early stage. As a matter of fact, as the mayor just mentioned, it is a very long process, one that usually takes about two years to get through. I'll be honest with you, we are here so early, and this is somewhat out of the ordinary for other pipeline projects. You know, we toyed with the idea to kind of go through the process like some of the other pipeline companies and just kind of wait till we get a more defined route, more answers about the operating procedures of our pipeline, and answer some of the other questions internally before we announce the project and start talking with the communities along the proposed route. We decided to take a more conservative approach, and so we're getting out here fairly, very, very early. And so I just ask you to bear with us a little bit. If we say we don't have the answer, it's not because we're hiding information, it's just because we got out here several months ahead of when we fully defined or finally settled on a route. So we'll talk you through as many facts that we have tonight. We'll explain the process to you so you understand that under certain circumstances and as we kind of work through the timeline, the milestones, both voluntary milestones as well as the FERC regulatory or state and some other federal agency milestones, you'll have a better feel for when we can provide you more solid information and information that, you know, that you can share and that would be available for different vehicles. Before I go too far along, I want to introduce you to some of my colleagues that are here. I'm going to give you details about each company, but I just want to focus on who is here before you tonight. We have Richard Hyde. He's one of my colleagues from AGL, a New Jersey company. They are representing Elizabeth Town Gas. And my guess is many of you in this room, if you're familiar with gas service at your home or your business, you're familiar with the name Elizabeth Town Gas. I also have Dante Dalisandro. Dante works with me at UGI Energy Services. He's worked on a number of pipeline projects, and tonight we'll share information with you about your typical construction, your typical restoration of a pipeline project and all the assets related to that for other pipeline projects. And then to his right, we have Bernie Holcomb, who I've known Bernie for a number of years. He works for URS Consulting Firm. Bernie has a number of offices here at his disposal, staff at his disposal here in New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania and other surrounding states. So we've worked with Bernie on other pipeline projects. You know, I've been saying all day that we could finish each other's sentences. Tonight Bernie's going to help you with more specifics about what the information that we have so far about the proposed route, the process, you know, whether it's for the state, local, or federal resource or regulatory agencies. And he'll help us kind of see what the path looks like in the next two, two and a half years. So that's our team. And hopefully, what I would like to do... So I mentioned a group of partners, mainly New Jersey partners. This is a joint project between AGL Resources, Rich is here representing the company tonight, NJR Pipeline Company. Some of you recognize the name, New Jersey Resources. PSEG Power, they just joined our project as an equity partner. South Jersey Resources, and as I mentioned, UGI Energy Services. The group has created an LLC, and going forward, we're known as the PennEast Pipeline Company. So while some of us are still on loan from our various companies, we'll be spending a lot of time within our lives for the next two years working on this project. This project is nearly a $1 billion investment. It's a 100-mile, 105-mile pipeline project. Right now, we're looking at the design being a 30-inch pipeline from Pennsylvania to New Jersey. Will actually be intersecting six counties, four in Pennsylvania and two here in New Jersey. I do want to say, take a break right here, because in the spirit of full disclosure, one of the pieces, one of the initial steps of the FERC process is what's called an open season. And this is a step that the pipeline companies have to go through to determine or prove that there is enough capacity, there's enough interest at the end of the pipeline, so that you don't have pipeline companies or producers in other parts of the states building pipelines to nowhere. We actually went through that process already and had a very successful open season. If you'd like to see or hear more details about that, I urge you to go to our website and you could get more details about the actual capacity. But I take that break and I point that out because we got such a great response during that process that we're already looking at the idea of increasing the size of the pipe from a 30-inch to 36-inch. So right now, we're designing as it's a 30-inch, but in the spirit of full disclosure, I do want to put that out there. And again, when we kind of talk about the milestones in the process, you'll get to see or you'll hear when for sure, you know, when we can tell you for sure when we've made that decision and fully designed the rest of the project. But right now, we are looking at delivering just short of one BCF of gas per day. And again, that's based on the results of our open season. And as you can see behind me, that amount of gas. So what's one BCF? That's enough to provide gas to approximately 4.7 million homes using the average residential consumption use. For the project, and again, I mentioned it's a 100-mile project. It'll take us about 10 months to actually construct the project. When you look at direct jobs, we're anticipating for other projects very similar to this, 2,000 direct jobs. That does not, and I pause there because I just want you to realize that that does not include indirect jobs. And so anyone who's been involved in any type of construction project, any manufacturing facility, one hard job, one direct job, has the ability to create two, three, four afterwards, depending on the specific type of construction and manufacturing job. So I talked about the open season and the results from that. One of the things that also stands out about this project, one, being that it was so successful and there was so much need downstream here in this market. But what's unique about this one in particular is the fact that our local distribution companies, so these are the companies that serve your home or your business, have signed on to be partners. So, you know, a number of pipeline projects, you have producers in northern parts of Pennsylvania that have trapped gas and they want to get that gas to market. This is different because the local distribution companies have said, "We have a demand, we have population centers, we have, you know, potential for more manufacturing, we have potential for more people converting to natural gas, so we would actually like to see some of that pipeline," or "some of that gas transported safely to New Jersey." So again, that's a major reason why we decided to kind of join on to this project. Is this a good time for you?
Good evening. My name is Richard Hyde, and I'm here representing Elizabeth Town Gas. And just want to talk to you a little bit about why did Elizabeth Town Gas decide to participate in this project as a customer? One of the things is that, you know, we sit here in an area where we have an abundant, low-cost supply of natural gas. And the thing that Elizabeth Town has looked at is, this will give us an opportunity to diversify our portfolio of natural gas for this local, close supply of low-cost gas. This will help us to continue to put downward pressure on our prices. We look at this as a great opportunity, and I think that I can also speak to some extent to the other New Jersey utilities. Of the BCF that Alisa talked about, 84% of this gas is going to stay in New Jersey, which is different than some of the other projects that you may have read or heard about over the past, over the past time. So this is a great opportunity for, in our opinion, for Elizabeth Town specifically, and also, we believe, for the other New Jersey utilities. We've been talking recently with a Township Administrator. I know the question has come up, and it may come up this evening later, about how do people in Hopewell benefit from this? Well, there is a process that, from a residential side, that the BPU requires us to go through to do a, and I'll just kind of use an industry term, a hookup, with the customer. And we would openly welcome anyone that is interested in tying into our natural gas service to come and talk to us. We're going to come and talk to Township Administrator on the 10th of October about that and how we can, you know, what the best process is to make sure we get the word out to everyone that's interested in participating in this, to have that opportunity. So we look forward to anybody that is interested in that. We look forward to talking with you about that. As you can see, you know, the infrastructure has really not kept pace in this area, so that's another great opportunity for this project. The New Jersey State Energy Master Plan, which is something that the state puts together to talk about not only natural gas, but the energy portfolio as a whole. Natural gas is a big part of that, so we look forward to that. From an economic development standpoint, with fuel being a vital part of any kind of a manufacturing process, bringing in a low-cost source of that fuel should only provide ample opportunity to increase economic development in, not only in this area, but in New Jersey as a whole. And so we, again, look forward to that opportunity. So with that, like I said, I'm here representing Elizabeth Town Gas. Look forward to any of you that want to be customers. Appreciate all of you that are customers. And with that, I will turn it back over.
Thank you. And we will get, you know, we'll kind of go through the presentation, make sure we have the basic information out, and then I think we'll open it up for questions. So if you have questions, write them down, we'll get to you. Okay, the route. So this has been the focus of everyone's questions and concern. And let me explain something extremely important to you that we've been trying to explain, and hopefully tonight when you leave here, you'll have a better understanding. We have to develop a starting point. So the route that you see before you, and yes, it is very high level, and it's high level for a very specific reason. As I said, we got out there pretty early. But what we do know, we have two things. We need a beginning, and that is up in Luzerne County, and we have an ending point in New Jersey. In between, so that's one. In between, we have some delivery points based on some of the conversations that we've had with some of the people downstream, you know, whether it's the electric generating unit, or it's an interconnection to serve one of the local distribution companies. So we have A and B, and then we have some points that we have to hit in between. That's what that line is right now. That and we do have some basic information using desktop tools. So going on the computer, you know, looking at topography, looking at some of the databases that we have about threatened endangered species, major waterways, water supplies. We look at that at a very high level, very early, and we try to create a line between point A and point B. We also do flyovers. We did that to kind of see, okay, well, there's a major cliff there, steep slopes, you know, groundbreaking for a new high school. Some of that you can see somewhat. You may see a very mature forested area. So you bring that information back to the office and you further refine that point A to point B. That's about what we have right now. And we're going to walk through how we get to the next step. But because we have that very high-level, basic information, it is difficult for us to tell you with certainty today exactly how the pipeline or how the proposed route could impact your property. And that's why it's so important for us to start the survey process. And so I assure you that it's not where we hiding the eight ball. Again, this is one of those consequences to getting out there so early and just starting with a just generic line between two points and trying to hit some major infrastructures or delivery points. So hopefully, that better explains why we have a route, but we don't have a route. Now, what we're going to get into a little bit later is the process for how we kind of fill in those informational gaps going forward. But I can assure you, we've made a commitment to meet with all of the elected and appointed officials. We've sent out letters to all of the landowners that we believe could be impacted by a very wide study corridor. That study corridor is a very conservative distance across because we don't know if we're going to end up over here or over there, but if we get survey permissions from a John Smith, we want to have, you know, several hundred feet, perhaps 400 feet across that band to, you know, if we make an adjustment, to already have survey permission for that land. But we will be, right now, if the proposed route stays, and I can tell you it's already changed since we drew the original line, we would be crossing 20 municipalities, over 20 municipalities, as I mentioned, six counties, going through two states. So a lot of ground to cover, a lot of surveys to conduct, different types of surveys. And again, as we get more information, we'll be sharing that with you all. One thing I do want to point out here is that our goal, and I can tell you that we've made a lot of progress already just trying to eliminate certain factors, but our goal is to avoid, minimize, and mitigate as many impacts as possible. And we look at over 50 factors when we say, okay, is this a good placement for this proposed route? So anything from endangered and threatened species, large population centers, dwellings, you know, you name it. And if you want more specific information, and as we get closer to our filing with FERC, you'll be able to see how we consider all of those factors and finally ended up with a route. Where we can, and this is important, this is a question that we get on a regular basis, where we can, we do try to co-locate with other utilities and other infrastructures within a certain right of way. In this particular case, that's where you typically start. That's another thing that you go back and you look at desktop. Where are the underground cable lines? Where are the underground water and sewer systems? Where are your, you know, any type of infrastructure that could be above or below ground? I can tell you, because of the development for some of those other utilities and special features, there's very little space left. So, you know, where it'd be nice to just kind of run the pipeline along a certain highway because, oh, well, that's a nice, good, open, convenient space, there are usually other utilities and other infrastructures within that space. And most times, you know, a pipeline project, because there are so many, you know, other infrastructures within that area, there's just no space for us to put a pipeline, especially a 30-inch. So the message there is, when we can co-locate, we will. Okay, so I'm going to, if anyone has looked at our website, and I strongly encourage you to do that, and I also strongly encourage you to go to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's website to find out the breadth or the depth of this process. And what I will say is, FERC is like one step of the process, but we're still required to work with other federal resource agencies. So we're talking U.S. Fish and Wildlife, NOAA, Army Corps of Engineers, Sescuhana River Basin Commission in this area, Delaware River Basin Commission. We still have to work with all of those other regulatory and resource agencies to make sure that we're mitigating or minimizing impacts from our pipeline project. But as I mentioned earlier, we're going to kind of walk you through the basics of the FERC process and explain to you where we are right now. I mentioned the first milestone was the open season. That's concluded. We're still talking, the phone is still ringing. That's what I will say that, with other folks downstream that would like to reserve some capacity on the pipeline. The next major milestone will be the pre-filing process. And this is a voluntary process typically when you have a large project that may cross state lines that might be for a long length. We've had projects that are 30 miles. This one is 105 miles right now. So when you have a complicated, long, cross-state lines project, you usually opt into a more open and transparent process before the formal filing process. So that's kind of where we are now. Just in the next couple of weeks, we will be submitting our pre-file application with FERC. We're looking at maybe the October 1st timeframe. That's usually about a 360, 400-day process at a minimum. And during that period of time is when we get out and we start talking to all of the stakeholders. We're starting to do some of the land surveys. We're out talking to the state and federal regulatory agencies. We start doing more research to see if we're going to get hits of threatened, threatened and endangered species. We start talking about some of the non-government organizations, like for example, water state organizations, to find out what their concerns are, what special data they might have to kind of help us, you know, go here versus go there. So it's really that open, transparent process where we're really encouraging two-way dialogue with all the different stakeholders along the process. After that, and we get all that information and we start feeling better about an appropriate route, that's when we would start submitting applications to FERC and some of the other federal and state resource agencies. And in some cases, it could be even down to the county level, depending on the authorization. For this project, we're looking at that taking place around July of 2015. So that's your next major milestone after we file the pre-filing application. So you have, actually, I missed one. So you have the October 1 pre-filing process. Before we get to that July 2015 timeframe, when we're feeling good about the route, we will host, Penn East will host a series of open houses. And so what that is, is more of an informal process, may end up back here at the high school. It's more of an open house feel where we may have a booth on water resources. We may have a booth on protected farmland. We might have a booth on safety, one on, you know, just specific for landowners that have received a certified letter for us. So it's an opportunity for the landowners and the other stakeholders to come and talk more one-on-one with Dante. How do you plan to cross my property? I have a drainage system on my property and I don't want to disturb. How are you going to go about doing that? And that's where, again, it's another opportunity for us to get more information about your property and the impact to you. Again, that leads us to the July 2015 timeframe. Also, FERC will host a series of scoping meetings. And both, all of these meetings actually, will be publicized. You know, FERC, because they're a government governing body, they'll have to follow the Sunshine Act requirements. We will have information on our website for our landowners that have received letters to date. They will also receive letters specific about all of the open houses and the scoping meeting. But the scoping meeting is a process where it's more formal. So there will be a stenographer. You would make comments on the record, and you would be addressing FERC directly. Now, there may be an opportunity, or there may be an occasion where some of the other resource agencies will kind of have a joint meeting with FERC at that process. And we're in the audience, and it's your opportunity to go on record with your questions, concerns, and comments. And then FERC, in return for your time and trouble, will then respond to each one of those questions and concerns and develop a response document. And that, again, will go back to the community and be a part of the official record from the process. And later on in the, I think I have a slide that we will get to a point where we will formally, continue to formally go through the process. It is a very specific, well-defined process. You, as some of the landowners, could, may have an opportunity to be an active member of that. And I encourage you to go on the FERC's website to see how you can intervene, how you can establish standing. There are responsibilities of PennEast Pipeline through that process. There are responsibilities from FERC to make sure you get every piece of correspondence that comes in the door. But also, depending on the level at which you get involved, you have responsibilities as well. And again, this is, as I mentioned, because this is a 100-mile pipeline, there are a lot of special features along the way. We voluntarily decided that we're going to go and through the full environmental impact study or statement process. So there's going to be a lot of information, a lot of volumes of data that we'll be sharing with FERC as well as with the general public. Real quickly, I'll start moving faster here because I know you have a lot of questions. As I mentioned, the next major milestone will be the open houses. I'm thinking probably about the second week of November, and that's if we hit our own self-imposed deadline of submitting the pre-file application around October 1. The formal application being submitted to FERC around July 2015. We're looking at FERC making a final decision somewhere. You know, we don't have control of that, but if you look at how long other projects take, we're looking at... of that, but if you look at how long other projects take, we're looking at December of 2017 construction. We're expecting that to take, if we receive the certificate, about 10 months for the scale of the project. And we're looking at actually turning the valve on in about, just before the winter season in 2017. Okay, so I talked a lot about the process already, I talked about how we defined the route so far, the proposed route so far. I'm going to ask Bernie, or do you want me to just keep moving?
Okay.
I'll keep moving, because we want to hurry up and get to questions. Through the question and answers, we could share more information about what are some of those 50 factors that we look at when we try to better define the route. As I mentioned, I think it's still very important to know that we do whatever we can to avoid, minimize, and mitigate. And we have some scenarios too, and I don't think I mentioned this early, earlier, and that is, we've already, for some special areas that people have brought to our attention over the last probably three or four weeks, we've already talked about and decided on some reroutes. There's one area in particular that we received some information that, you know, we would be crossing, originally, we were planning to cross the Appalachian Trail perhaps one or two times. We understood that that was a special area, or a special area of interest for a certain stakeholder, so we went back and we've already rerouted. So again, that's just confirmation, or just a better example of why we can't say for sure exactly where that route's gonna be, because as we receive information, we make adjustments. And we try to balance, you know, one factor against the other. Land agents, what I will say is, we trained all of our land agents twice before we sent them out into the field. This is the group of people, if you received a recertified letter from URS, PennEast, or Western Land Services, these are the ladies and gentlemen that will contact you and request survey permission. And I want to stress here, it is, at this point, it is just survey permission. It's so that we can have one of our scientists, one of our surveyors, go out on your land, determine whether or not you have a natural spring. We received an email about that. If you have a certain endangered species on your property, if you have a special factor, if you have, you planted a tree in your grandson's honor, you know, it's that conversation with that land agent and/or surveyor to say, this is what's different, special, unique about my property, and I want you to treat it in this way. So that's the process of the land agents. I know that there are, we're receiving certified letters or other letters saying, if you come on my property, I consider that trespassing. This is one of those thresholds, or one of those requirements from FERC, that unfortunately, if I say, John, I want to come to your property, and you say, no, it's trespassing, I don't want to talk to you, we are required to touch that landowner, to try to contact that landowner and try to get a response from that landowner three times. So please don't consider if we, you know, we receive your letter, and then we call you with a follow-up call, and you say no, and then we come out, you stop answering the phone, and then all of a sudden, you know, we show up at your door. Please do not consider that harassment. That is a part of the FERC process, if you have very specific needs. If you're concerned about someone just walking up to your door and you don't know who that person is, there's a number on the letter, call us, we will make sure we make an appointment with that person. If you say, I want my grandson to be the person that you contact and, you know, I want him to sit down with me on a Sunday, we will come out on a Sunday afternoon and sit down with you and your son, and your attorney if you like. But just please, please understand that it's not a form of harassment, we just need to follow the FERC process, and as soon as we kind of get through that, we'll move on. We'll move on and wait to the end of the process. Right-of-way agreement, so I also want to stress that right now, we are requesting permission to come on your land, to do surveys, and to talk to you, you are not relinquishing any future rights. You are not by saying this, by signing this survey permission today, that you fully support or you're in agreement with us using your land going forward. That's a whole separate process, and again, down the road, much more down the road. Bernie, did I miss anything important there?
Okay.
Construction, I'll get through this quite frankly. As I mentioned, we're looking at 100, 105 miles, we're looking at completing that pipeline project in about four stretches. So that doesn't mean that we're doing the entire four miles at a time, and we're doing it in segments for a number of reasons, and typically for environmental protection reasons. You just don't want to open up that much space all at once. It is a 10-month window, that schedule can slide. We typically, typically try not to construct during the winter months for obvious reasons, sometimes you can't prevent that. The type of factors that would, you know, kind of put us in the mindset of doing a winter construction, if we come across a threatened and endangered species, or another special factor along the way that we're trying to avoid. But typically, you know, it's just a much more difficult process for us to get our workers out there and get equipment working right, and working with frozen ground here in Pennsylvania and New Jersey. So, we typically try to stay away from winter months, if practical. Again, one of the other things we've read from other projects and that we've heard as a concern here during construction, is that we will wander off that right-of-way, that, you know, as I mentioned before, down the road, we will ask permission to actually work on your land, we'll work on this much, but we'll actually have permit and authority to work on this much, because we need that extra space for staging equipment, turning vehicles around, you know, doing some, maybe some on-spot welding, you know, different things. So, just know, when we actually get out there, the area that we're working within is an area that we've already got an agreement for, with you, we've already compensated for you, we've gotten approval from all the regulatory agencies, and going outside of that right-of-way is very bad news for us. So, and there will be folks along the construction projects that will be looking for that. Also, through the construction project, or process, I do want to stress that there are several layers of inspectors out there. FERC will have regular inspectors out there, PennEast, we have, I think for one project, we had a couple of hundred of our own inspectors out there, and you don't have Elisa Harris out there, you know, who might be an environmental inspector looking at a welding job. We have separate inspectors, just who's looking at welding, we have environmental inspectors, we have safety inspectors, and we have the overarching inspectors. So, there's a lot of people out there watching the same thing at the same time. And there's also the ability for the chief inspector to shut something down if something's potential impact to human health or the environment. I'm gonna ask Dante to kind of walk us through the next two slides, because this is an area that actually, before we even announced this, our partners here in New Jersey said, there's two things you need to be ready to talk about. Well, three things. Safety, restoration, because of some of the other projects that have come through the area, and the farmland preservation program. And I know there are a ton of issues out there, and we've talked to a number of people, but I would say those are the three things that keep popping up regularly. So I don't want to try to skim through this area real quickly, I just want to turn over to Dante that has years of experience, that can make sure he hits the highlights. Dante, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Elisa. So, restoration is, as part of the pipeline construction process, there's gonna be a number of different things that are gonna happen. But the first thing that they're gonna come do is actually come in and clear the property. And following clearing, which is any trees or anything like that, they're gonna actually grade the property. So, one of the questions that we typically get is, what happens with, you know, top soil and some of the other precious soils that are on the surface, that, you know, obviously are concerning for farmers? The topsoil is actually stripped and stockpiled off to the edge of the right-of-way, and it's conserved there. Usually, it's vegetated during the course of the construction, so, and then, once construction is completed, the topsoil will actually be thrown back on top of the right-of-way to its original state. So, depending on the terrain, some of the grading might be quite severe, because we have to actually grade a flat area to work on, for construction vehicles to drive, for bring pipe out into the work, into the area. So, but just be rest assured that after construction is completed, no matter how steep of a grade is cut out, that grade will be put back into its original grade. So, essentially, what you see after construction is, from a grade perspective, is exactly what you see there today. The topsoil, again, will be restored, we will work with you as far as what to use to re-vegetate the right-of-way. Again, this is what we're required by FERC, as far as what type of vegetation to offer. Typically, it's whatever's native to the area, and you will have a choice of what type, what type of vegetation you would like to, for us to use on your property. So, and as far as use of the property after the pipeline is installed, you essentially have full use of the property, just as you do today. The right-of-way does not, does not give PennEast ownership of the property. You still own the property and can use the property as you currently do. And obviously, there's a couple of caveats to that. One, we cannot build any permanent structures over top of the right-of-way. And the other is, we can't plant any trees over the right-of-way, and there's specific reasons for that. From an operation and safety perspective, there are things that we need to do every year and monitor, for monitoring, surveys, that require us to have access to the right-of-way. You know, there are things that we can do, however, to provide security to your property if you wish. The right-of-way needs to remain open, but we can still put gates up, we can put, if there's a stone wall that defines a property line, and the wall's been there for as long as, you know, all your generations can remember, we can put the wall back in, we just need to leave a gate or something that can be locked after, so that when we do come through to do those surveys, we can unlock the gate, open the door, drive through, or drive, or walk through, and as we pass through the wall, we'll turn around, close the gate, and re-lock it. So, there are options for you as a right-of-way to maintain your property line, maintain your security, and continue to reuse, reusing the land. From a safety perspective, you know, for PennEast, and particularly for us, you know, from an engineer's perspective, safety is obviously paramount. It's one of the most important things that we consider from the very start of a project. Even today, as we're evaluating different volumes and different routes, we're engineering the pipeline, what size, what wall thickness, what yield strength of steel to use. And again, all of these, all of the design parameters are dictated by federal rules and regulations. They tell us exactly how they want us, at a minimum, to design this pipeline. For us internally at PennEast, we've used those rules and regulations as a minimum requirement. And in most cases, we are going well above and beyond what is required from a safety perspective when designing this pipeline. Just to give you an example, you know, we'll have to do an area classification study along the entire corridor. And what that means is, you will go along the corridor and evaluate the population density in every single square foot of the corridor. And depending on the population density, you'll classify that area from a 1 to a 4, 4 being the most dense, 1 being least dense. And based on that population density, you will have to build in a safety margin into your pipe design calculations. Even for Eric, for us at PennEast, even for areas that are designated, or can be designated as a Class 1, we will not design to anything less than a Class 2 area classification. There are a number of different things that we'll do from a safety perspective during construction. Every square, or every weld on the pipe will be x-rayed, the pipe will be tested for integrity, it'll actually be tested to a pressure well above what it'll be operating at. There is, every inch of coating will be tested for integrity, and if there's any, if there's any quality issues on the coating, it will be fixed before it's buried. And from a, as an ongoing operating safety measure, from a cathodic protection, we'll be protecting the pipe for the life duration of the pipe. There's a system that's put on the pipe that will actually protect it from corroding in the ground. You could go, you'll, we'll be able to go back 100 years from now and dig this pipe up, and it'll look as good as the day that we put it in. So there's a lot of things that we're doing on an ongoing basis to protect the integrity of the pipe, and protect, you know, the environment, protect the surroundings. From an environmental perspective, again, the Department of Environmental Protection will basically tell us those guidelines that we have to use to protect erosion, sedimentation during construction, how to re-vegetate, how to put bridges over streams if we're crossing those areas, and protect from water runoff and sediment. Again, we'll look at all those best practices and use them as a minimum requirement, and in most cases, go above and beyond that. During operations, again, there's a lot, there are many regulations that we must follow on an ongoing basis for operating a pipeline. There are annual inspections that we need to do. There'll be a leak survey once a year. Again, as far as keeping the right-of-way clear and open, we actually have to traverse the entire right-of-way once a year and test for leaks. Once every seven years, we are, we're required to send what we call a pig through the pipeline, and don't worry, your livestock, stock is, will be safe. It's actually an electronic device that we send through the pipeline, and it'll check every square inch of the pipe for any anomalies, any degradation in wall thickness, it'll even check the coating on the pipe. So every seven years, we'll run that test, and over time, you can build a database of, you know, how is the pipe look versus the day that you put it in? Is it degrading? If there are any anomalies that are detected, we'll go back and dig them up, fix them, and do what we need to do. And we'll be monitoring the operations of the pipeline 24/7, we'll be watching the pressures along the pipeline. If we see any drops in pressure, there'll be response protocols put in place. We work with all the local emergency responders, EMA, ambulance services, we will meet with them annually, just to remind them we're here, and what to do in case of emergency, if we call them, how do they respond, how can they help us? You know, we're, once we're in the community, we'll stay involved with the community, we'll, you know, we often attend fundraisers on an annual basis, so we realize that there is, you know, the pipeline is gonna have a presence there, and so we want them to be prepared to help us as well as help you. And then just to close, you know, pipeline transportation is still the safest way to transport natural gas in the United States. There are many other ways that we could potentially transport natural gas, but that requires liquefying it, which is a process in itself. And then you're transporting this over the roadway, which means a lot more tractor-trailers on the road, which has its own safety concerns as well as environmental concerns. So, you know, there is a safe way of transporting this natural gas, and we're dedicated to make sure that we do that.
Thank you. And I promise, just two more slides. Dante, if you can advance one more time, or two more times? Okay, so if you're a landowner, allow, along the proposed route, what does this mean to you? I hope there's some more clicks there.
There isn't.
There aren't any, so I'll go over them. So what we're committed to make sure that you receive throughout this process, as Dante mentioned, that the, your property could be used the way it's being used in the future, you know, we'll restore it to its current condition. I can tell you, there are examples where we return things in better condition. I remember when I first arrived at the company, and there was a gentleman that just installed a tree stand, and, you know, Dante says he's gonna get the best tree stand anyone can get at Cabela's. So, you know, there's instances like that, there's, you know, we bring stone, if there's a particular area, there's trails, rails to trails, that when we're done, it's much better. better trail system. So we will return it equal or better. Where we have to cut down mature forested areas, there are several things that we can do, you know, do land swaps, we can use special techniques where we can, we can minimize that final footprint to reforest. There's several things that we can do, and the more that you share with us through this, especially this 360, 400-day process, the better we can figure out how to mitigate. Fair compensation for the entire process as we go through this two-year process, as well as going forward if we continue to use your land for some of the activities that Dante just mentioned. And also, as Richard talked about earlier, you know, we talk about building the superhighway, and then you go back and you look at other opportunities for exit ramps and all of the potential benefits and opportunities along that ramp. So the idea of bringing this reliable, low-cost natural gas to New Jersey kind of opens a number of doors. Dante, additional benefits, most of these we talked about. As we get further in the process, I think we also mentioned that we have to share with FERC why this is good for the community, the environment, and some of the other factors. So we'll have more data for you about what this is going to do in terms of the economic engine for New Jersey and the municipalities where we draw workers, where we go to the local hotels, where we go to the local restaurants. You know, the $1 billion is just the investment to get it built, but when you look at all the other money and resources that we'll send to the area, it's pretty impressive. So what I would just point out here, please go to our website. We will be feeding information, we'll be adding upgrades, again, when we have a better feel for what the proposed route will look like. We will add an interactive map, and I'm hoping to get that, you know, as we get more information, we feel more comfortable about a route, we'll add an interactive map to our website, so John Smith can actually put his address in and to see if he's within that 400-foot, 400-feet study corridor. We have a toll-free line. This number is just for the general public. We also have a very specific toll-free number for any of the landowners that receive that letter, so I just encourage you to use that. I think I could probably, anyone who's used that email address or has called that number, I bet if you called Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., somebody got back to you in less than half a day. We're extremely responsive. We have eyes and ears, both internally and externally, to answer any questions. And if you send something over the weekend, first thing Monday morning, you get a response. So I encourage you to visit the website early and often, look for changes. There's a button on the front page that says "breaking news." So anytime we hit a major milestone, or we find out more information, we have more facts, push that button, and it'll take you to the latest and greatest information. We're ready for questions, for whatever we didn't cover. Thank you for being so patient.
Thank you. There were sign-up sheets in the back, if you would like to ask a question, if you could make sure that you sign up, that would be helpful. It's, we've got about an hour, an hour and a half at this point. What I'd like to do is ask individual residents to come forward and ask your questions at the mic, please. If a question's been asked already, please don't ask the same question. You've got two minutes to ask a question or make a comment. Please try and stick with that as much as possible so that we have an opportunity, or PennEast has an opportunity, to respond. Please direct all your questions to me, and if we don't, if we're not able to answer a question, if they're not able to answer a question tonight, we are, we're videotaping this, we're going to be taking down all of your questions, we're going to be making sure that we get answers for you. We'll have those answers to your questions up on our website, and links to all of the important sites that they want us to link to. But more importantly, we're going to have answers for you. So if we don't get your answers tonight, we'll get you answers as soon as possible. But because we don't have an unlimited amount of time, unfortunately, if you could come forward to the mic, residents first, ask your questions, make your comment, keep it as short as possible. And I really appreciate you coming out tonight. It's an important meeting. It's one of many that we're going to be having, and you're welcome to come forward now, if you wouldn't mind. First person. And you have to give us your name, I'm sorry, your name and your address, please.
Carol Bertone.
You have to speak into the mic.
Carol Bertone. I live at 32 Sherrill Lane in Pennington.
Can everybody hear her? No, nobody can hear you. Is the mic on?
Maybe not. Hello, can you hear me now?
Oh, perfect.
Great, okay. Carol Bertone. I live at 32 Sherrill Lane in Pennington. I'm close to, I think they called it B. A is up here, B is down here. So our township, you guys are our township officials, what's your plan? What do you guys think about this whole idea? You think it's a great idea?
We're not going to have a conversation because we don't have time. I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to ask questions.
That's my question, though.
Yeah, but are there other questions that you have?
I have a lot of questions. That's only one of them.
But can you ask all of your questions at one time?
Sure. Are you guys getting paid for any of this? Is our township getting any money for the benefit of having this 90-foot wide? I mean, look, how far is 90 feet? That's a big area. That's another question.
Are those all your questions? We really do need to ask, ask you to ask all the questions.
Yes, that's all my questions.
No, we're not getting paid, and we're here to listen to what they have to say, but I can guarantee you that we've got as many questions as you do, and we're as concerned as you are.
Okay. Okay, I'll be in touch.
My name is Nick Daviduk, 16 Brewster Court.
Could somebody make sure, thanks. Is it working, the mic?
Okay, fine. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I have trouble with my voice.
Could you repeat your name again, sir?
Nick Daviduk, D-A-V-I-D-U-K, 16 Brewster Court, Pennington. My questions, that I'd like to have some answers on, is the proposed pipeline's safety. This is the safety of the pieces of pipe that, that after it's buried, this is where it's purchased to. What is the code, what code is the pipeline being designed on?
Sir, could you ask all of your questions at one time? And I want to make sure that, do you have an answer to, if you want to wait until you have?
We'll jump in, if that's okay? I believe your question was, what code is the pipeline being designed to?
The pieces of pipe, not the pipeline, that comes under the federal regulations where you bury it and such. I'm talking, you're buying pipe. What code are you buying the pipe to?
I believe it's ASTM 5L is the code that it's being designed to.
Okay. Do you know what the X is? 5LX, you know what the strip is?
Currently, the pipe yield is 70,000 PSI.
70,000?
70,000.
Okay, that's, okay, fine. Now, what kind of material is that?
It's carbon steel.
Carbon steel, any alloy?
Their, carbon steel is broken down, and I'm not a metallurgist, but there are certain requirements that is, that carbon steel is required to have.
Okay. Now, what is the design pressure?
The design pressure is 1,480 PSI.
1,480? Okay. Now, what percentage of the design pressure is being built on a yield strip?
I'd have to go back and do that calculation, I don't know it offhand.
Okay, that's going to conform to API?
Yes, sir, API.
Do you know the wall thickness for our township, and does it include the corrosion allowance?
The corrosion allowance on?
Just a corrosion allowance?
I believe API 1104 doesn't require corrosion allowance, but again, as I stated when I was giving the presentation, when we do the design for wall thickness on, for the operating pressure, it'll tell us what wall thickness is required. We will, we always go well above and beyond what the minimum wall thickness is.
Okay, fine. I guess the pipe will be buried or wrapped. I noticed you said the pipe will be buried or wrapped, will be wrapped or coated.
Yes, sir, yeah. The entire pipe is coated with a protective film, it's fusion bonded epoxy, as well as part of the insulation, there'll be a rock shield. It's just a protective coating so that when it's backfilled, no rocks will impinge against the pipe.
In the interest, in the interest of all of the people who are lined up behind you who would ask questions as well, if you could hold the rest of your questions till after they've been able to ask their question?
Okay, fine.
Because we are trying to keep it to two minutes.
Okay. Anything unusual about, we should know about?
I'm sorry?
Where's the pipe going to be purchased from?
Sir, we're going to have to ask you, as much as I hate to do that.
It's domestic pipe, sir.
Dante.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, would you like to? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Felicity Toto, and I have three questions.
Yeah, we need to give us your address, too, please.
I'm at 100 Hessian Hill Drive in Pennington.
Thank you.
I understand from your slide that 84% of the natural gas is going to be utilized by New Jersey residents, is that correct?
If you could ask all your questions at one time.
I was not aware that there was any shortage of gas in New Jersey, and so I'm a little confused by that. It seems like we exported about 20% of the natural gas last year, so I'd like to know why now? Why now are we deciding to go forth with this project, and how much of this will eventually This is a community that uses well water in a great many of the areas. I'm concerned, I know for my well's safety, I'd like to know a little bit more about this project going forth when we have so much of this community that uses exclusively well water. I would also like to know, how many of your proposed routes have actually been altered due to community opposition?
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like to?
Sure. I'll answer the export question, and that's why I brought it up. 84% of that is staying in New Jersey, not being exported.
But why? We've been fine. I understand the Midwest has had a shortage, but I did not know that we had a shortage.
We really, the problem with having a conversation is that then others can't ask questions, so I, with your forbearance, okay? I want to make sure, I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to ask a question. We can come back later, but everybody needs to have a time to ask a question. So ask, if you could answer the question, please.
I'm sorry, answer. So why is there, well, from, I can tell you from an Elizabeth Town gas standpoint, it provides us a diversity of portfolio. So now we can bring in lower-cost natural gas to add to our portfolio that we have now.
Lisa, was there anything that you wanted to add to that?
The only thing I would add, just talking to some of the other partners here in New Jersey, you know, you were all, I would say, victims of Superstorm Sandy, I have trouble saying that every time, and having more natural gas, having that diversity of supply, having the ability to reinforce your systems coming in, the chances or the opportunity to look at curtailment decreases in a big way. So here in New Jersey, and you'll know this more than I do, but it's our understanding, when you had the storms that blew through, you were looking at the possibility of some curtailments in the area, just not getting natural gas. So there were real occasions where this area in New Jersey was in danger.
I think there was also a question about the effect on our well water?
Yeah, I can.
The well water and then the roots, how many have been altered?
I'm sorry?
Well water and how many?
The well water and the roots.
How many roots have been altered?
From a well water perspective, all the wells that are identified, that are within the study corridor will be identified prior to construction. The well water will be analyzed, and then it'll, the same thing will happen after construction to make sure that it hasn't changed, the water quality hasn't changed.
And how many roots have been altered?
How many?
How many, I don't think this is for you, Dante, how many roots have been altered due to opposition from community groups?
So that's a tough question to answer with a number, but what I can say is, if you were to look at any of our past projects, you would be challenged to find any pipeline that's a straight line. And that's because, as we receive that information through the process, or as we had a landowner that just was completely, you know, opposed to the pipeline, our projects don't look like this. And trust me, when we start, we want it to look like this. When we're done, our projects are looking like that. And that's, that's the best way I can answer your question. If you look at a pipeline project and you don't see a straight line, there's a reason for that, and it's typically because there was some information or someone was opposed to being a party.
And I would like to make a request of you. If there are questions that you don't feel you've answered completely, or we don't feel you've answered completely tonight, recognizing that we have a lot of people, we are going to be sending you those questions, and if you could more, if you could answer them in detail online, it'd be appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir?
So my question is to that point.
I need your name and your address.
My name's Alex Hanson, and I live at 1 Moorehead Drive in Pennington. Some have argued that pipeline companies have chosen routes specifically through conservation easements and preserved land because it reduces the amount of compensation they have to pay. And in my case, a route crosses our, the length of our farm, it's a long farm, and it's conservation preserved land with public access, the public purses, and we donated a substantial portion of the value to conserve this land. It's like a park. You're driving a pipeline through a park, it gets used by dozens of people every day, and, you know, it just seems like a senseless routing, you know? And, you know, I've served on conservation organization boards, it's very tough to get people to do conservation or easements. And, you know, it seems like this pipeline has made it easy, this easement has made it easier for you guys because it's open space. And, you know, your actions are going to dissuade people from doing these kinds of conservation easements. And also, how can you, you know, how can you restore a wetland? How can you make a public park look good when it has a pipeline going through it? I mean, it's a scar on the land, and, you know, it just seems senseless and kind of heartless to the organizations that work so hard to do this, and to the township that's put their public treasure into making these spaces available to the public and to the people that grant these conservation easements. And, you know, it seems like you've maneuvered the federal government to create these pathways, and it just seems nonsensical. Can you explain why you would put a pipeline through a conservation easement?
We're looking at over 100 miles, and we're trying to, we've looked at a very broad corridor as we go along there, at all types of resources. Right now, we're still mapping those resources, asking permission to survey as part of the analysis and looking at alternatives. We've looked at over 50 different parameters. We have been working with land survey agents in the courthouses to identify all those land parcels that have conservation easements. We've listed those that we've been able to find to date for, you know, the properties here in New Jersey. We were made aware earlier today that there are a number of those conservation easements that have not been registered through to the courthouse, so they're not reflected on the deeds. And we were given suggestions on how to locate those easements, get additional information so that we can collect that information, map where those parcels are, and, you know, go back and reevaluate, you know, the route as it goes through there. It's interesting, you know, and we're very sensitive to the different types of resources, the conservation easements, the parklands, and all, as you pointed out. But it's, you know, it's the balancing act when you've got to go from a point A to a point B, and you've got to look at all of the resources along that route. And even when you're trying to deviate, minimize, avoid, you know, impacts as you're going through wetlands, water bodies, different types of land resources, we're taking those and we're tabulating, and, you know, the linear feet, the acreage, for each of the different routes as we go through there, to come up with what would be a preferred route, the least environmentally damaging, most practical alternative, that'll get from the point A to the point B, and supply the gas to the different connectors along that point. As Elisa pointed out, it's still a work in progress. You know, we're looking at corridors in order to deviate within those corridors of, you know, 400 feet to avoid resources. corridors of, you know, 400 feet to avoid resources that we identify, whether it's something like a spring, a wetland, a cultural resource, contamination site, historic property. We found some of those to date, and we've already deviated, moved the pipeline away from those areas. So, you know, as we go through from now until July, that route is continually going to be refined, trying to avoid, you know, those areas that have conserved and been put aside.
So the answer to that is we make sure that your easement is known to them as soon as possible.
They're aware of it. It's on the line.
Thank you. But I think the point is that we need to let everybody know, and let them know that we have those easements. It wasn't clear to me, though, Bernie, whether or not you're going to avoid conservation easements.
I don't know at this time if we can successfully get from point A to B and avoid all easements as we're going through there. There's areas where, you know, we've blocked out, and, you know, you'd have to deviate for miles to avoid those easements. And we, yeah, you shrug your shoulders on that, and I understand. But when you avoid that, you may be hitting more wetlands, you may be hitting threatened endangered species habitats, you know, there's all those other factors, and I concur, that's part of the whole analysis we're going through right now, to look at that. It's, you know, you can't, you know, it's going to be a trade off sometimes on that. And, you know, that's where we're reaching out.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It doesn't help to do that because it takes away time from asking questions and answering, okay? So, and I, I would, if you could, if we could move on to the others, but you're welcome to come back afterwards. And certainly, we'll have an opportunity to add any question you have on our website, and they will answer it. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cynthia Belloff. I live at 394 Redding Street in Pennington. My property is not affected by the pipeline. However, I do have friends that are going to be directly affected by it. My question is, if they do not allow surveyors onto their land, they've been notified by your company three times, have denied it three times, their local neighbors in the neighborhood do not provide you access to that land to do the surveying. And let's say this is a large swath of the township. What are you going to do? You can't, in technical aspects, you've evaluated what your options are. What are you doing with the land? Are you basically claiming eminent domain and forcing those landowners to relinquish the land?
I can answer the first part of that, and then I'll flip it over to Elisa to answer the second part. If we're not allowed survey access, then we resort to using all of the online data sources, the aerial mapping sources, LiDAR, as many datas that we can get from public accessible roadways, parcels that are joined that we may have survey access permission to. We compile as much of the information as we can from all those available resources to, you know, you know, put together an assessment on the impacts to whether it's wetlands, a stream crossing, whatever the resources may be on those parcels.
So we do have the ability, we do have the ability to get more information. Again, it's always better if we get that from on the ground land surveys and talking to the landowners. The, the benefit of going through the FERC process and, you know, crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is is that if you're successful at the end of the process, you do receive a certificate. That certificate allows you to exercise eminent domain, you know, rights. Now, I can tell you, again, in the course of our culture, and I understand it's the same culture of our partners, we do everything that we can. So, and I'm glad you asked this question. So the three, you know, when we have to document, that we tried to talk to Jane Smith three times, and she said no, the FERC will take that into consideration, see what information we were able to achieve. And at the end of the day, if we're successful in, in meeting all the requirements, we would have the ability to, you know, and that goes through the court system. And quite frankly, I don't know that system. We just haven't been in that, that situation. We've been able to either just reroute or make an agreement with the landowner.
If I may have one additional question. In your surveyors, when they come to get permission for the, for signing the survey permission, are, what are their tactics that they use? It has been reported at the public meeting in Lambertville that the surveyors said that their land would be taken by eminent domain if they did not allow us to do the survey signing. They were lied to by the surveyors, saying that their neighbors had signed the documents. There is deception on that part, and it was recommended that any conversation that they had with the surveyors would be recorded or should be recorded. Do you approve of that?
Absolutely not. As I mentioned, we trained, we put our land agents through two trainings before we sent them out in the field. I can't say whether or not for sure that happened or not. What I can say for sure is, if you get the name of that land agent, and it's, they're working on our project, I gave you several sources that you can call and email us, please send us the name of that person, and we will deal with that appropriately because that's just not our culture, and that's not what we would stand for.
Is it acceptable to record those conversations by the company?
I've never heard of that. I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you mean if you want to record?
Yes, and the meeting or any conversations of that nature.
That's a new one for me, honestly. I'll find out.
We are going to get answers to all your questions, that's for sure. Did you have a question, Mr. Penn?
On the heels of the last question, is there any documentation on any project that simply says that land was not accessible?
Let me understand your question. I'm sorry.
I'm saying on any project, has any piece of land been designated not accessible by means of the landowners refusing?
Yes. So, let me make sure I understand. So you're saying, has there been a scenario where we did not survey a property or use a property because a landowner denied us access? Is that your question?
Use would be the...
Yes, that's, that's been a case.
Okay.
And that's the reroute process that we go through. So if we come across a landowner, and what we will do, if they say absolutely no, we will look at all of our opportunities to either reroute, to go back, to find out what their wants and needs are. But there have been occasions. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Hello, my name is Charlize Katzenbach, and I live at 90 Lambertville Hopewell Road. Most of the people in our township don't get natural gas. It doesn't come out, never will. What possible benefit does this have for us as a township, or all the other townships that you pass through? Where you pass through because they're not getting gas because they are not developed, and you want to use our land, drop our property values for your benefit so that you guys can make lots of money moving gas? Why should we accept that? Do you know, this is another question, do you know that Hopewell Township once had a major cross-country route proposed to go through it? 95 was meant to go through it? That was a national highway. Hopewell Township dug in its little heels. We don't have 95. I doubt we will have a pipeline.
Okay, good evening. My name is Kevin Kaczynski. I'm from 67 West Shore Drive in Hopewell Township. I'm a longtime resident of Hopewell Valley, and like many folks here, I'm very concerned about aspects of the PennEast Pipeline. First and foremost, I'm concerned that how the pipeline threatens to destroy the open space we've all fought to preserve, the conserved land. The pipeline path currently goes through one of our parks, and it also impacts the fragile ecosystem of the Sauerland Mountains. So I understand that up to 1,200 acres of land in Hopewell Township will be directly impacted by the pipeline. And for anyone who hasn't seen it, this is a picture of what the swath of 40 feet of clear cut trees looks like. This is not something I want to see up and down Hopewell Valley. Second, I'm like trying to understand the economic benefits of this pipeline. What is going to deliver to the township? We're clear, Pennsylvania gets the revenue from all the fracking operations. Downstream users get the benefit of low gas. What do we get? As I look at it, my neighborhood has asked on five or six separate occasions, we are within a half mile, a mile of Elizabeth Town gas, and they have denied us gas continually in the Elm Ridge Park neighborhood. Beyond this, I have a couple specific questions for you to address tonight. Beyond the minimum you talked about, what are you going to restore, do to restore impacted areas, and also compensate homeowners for the loss of property value due to the easement? What are you going to do to guarantee the safety of our drinking water and wells, not just at construction, but if there is a leak, or if there's a pipeline breach, what do we get to drink during those days and weeks that you're repairing the pipeline? Secondly, as I looked at the map, why is the pipeline going through the open space of Hopewell Valley versus Bucks County? Looks like there's just as good of a pipe path through that area. We know it's cheaper for you to clear cut our trees to come through the township, but that's, you know, through preserved land. That impacts us in a fundamental way, as you've heard, not just from me, but many other of the citizens here tonight. What else is going to happen? There are six additional pipelines that are potentially going through the Delaware River watershed and pending approval. So net for me, there's a lot of unanswered questions. I'd like to get some on my specifics, but we need answers. You know, you've heard clearly, we're going to defend our township and the values of open space and low development that we've fought together so hard to create.
Do any of you want to answer any of those questions?
Some of the questions have been asked already, but I do, I just want to make...
You're, you're going to need to come to the mic because nobody can hear you, including me. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. You mentioned about a park that the pipeline is going through. What's the name of that park?
No, I think he was...
It's going adjacent through...
No, I think he was saying Elm Ridge Park has not received gas from Elizabeth Town, even though they've asked for it.
I'm sorry. Okay. Because I was thinking, I'm not aware of a park. Let me see the other questions. Some we've already answered. In terms of compensation for landowners, Dante, you could probably speak to that better than I could.
Yeah, I mean, initially, there, there's a negotiation that would occur once we get to the right of way process for, you know, what, what would the landowner consider fair for, for compensation to go across their property? If, I guess, I guess if it requires FERC to get involved, then it'll go to a somewhat of a fair market value analysis that's completed to, to determine what that number is.
All right. I think there were a lot of other questions there. We're, we're taking them down, and we will be sending those to you.
Correct.
So that you can answer them.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Evelyn Gabai, 322 Hopewell Amwell Road in Hopewell. My question is quite simple. If the majority of the population does not want this pipeline, is it going to happen anyway?
Hope not. But are you asking them, or?
Well, I'm asking the township committee, I suppose. You're the ones who make the final decision. Are you the ones who make the final decision on whether this pipeline happens or not?
I wish we were. It would be a very short meeting, but no, we're not.
So who is, who is responsible for making the decision?
I think you need to ask, PennEast, that very good question.
If the population does not want this pipeline, is it going to happen regardless of what we want?
So as a part of the FERC process, it is our job to get as many landowners supportive of the process. As I mentioned earlier, the FERC process does allow for us to exercise eminent domain. Now, through this entire process, this entire two-year process plus, it is our responsibility to minimize, mitigate as many of the issues that you might have. But I do not want to set the expectation that if 50 people in this room do not want this pipeline, we're going to go away. That'd be disingenuous. We see...
I'm not talking about that, and I understand what you're...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm talking, if the majority of the people, not 50 people, the majority of the people don't want the pipeline, is it a done deal? You know, and is this just your PR to make it less...
I cannot, you know, it's impossible for me to answer that question. It is not a done deal as far as we're concerned. There are many things that we have to prove to FERC and all the other resource agencies, that we can do this, we can build this, that we've addressed as many issues possible. But at the end of the day, I can't say to FERC, you must give me this certificate, just as much as you, you know, as an individual landowner or a specific township can say, we think you should or should not make a final decision. So...
Have they ever disagreed with you? Have they ever said, okay, don't, the most of the people, the community doesn't want it, you can't do it? Has that ever happened?
Not that I'm aware of, but I have studied all the questions.
This is the first, this, you do need to use your mic.
Yeah, I mean, as Elisa said earlier in her presentation, we, a part of the FERC process is that you have to basically prove to them that there's a need for this project. They're not just going to let this project happen because we want it to happen. There has to be a reason for it, and, and there has to be a need for it. And that's something that the FERC process, this two-year process is a part of, talking about where is it going? Why is it needed? Who is interested in it? And, and is it being constructed based on conjecture, or do you have actual people that are committed to the project?
Do they consider the community that the pipeline is going?
Ma'am, that has to be your last question.
Let me try and answer that. The NEPA process does consider the public's input through the process. Yes, FERC has denied projects if the, you know, PennEast or the other companies that have applied to them have not showed that there's an overriding need, public necessity for the project, need for the gas, that they have not showed that they have answered all the environmental questions that are going to come up through the NEPA process, that, you know, and the EIS that'll be prepared by a third-party contractor, not by PennEast, under the direction of FERC, and they will be evaluating it. If they don't feel that all the, you know, 13 resource reports and, you know, subject matter have been answered, then they will either stop the process, ask for more data, formal data requests, you know, say it has to be reconfigured, or they can deny it. But that's up to FERC.
I just want to say that it's not a done deal. We, it's the beginning of the process. We've got a lot of homework to do, and we've got a lot of thinking to do about what we're doing next. So don't give up hope.
Kim Robinson, Harberton Rocktown Road. To our committee, I urge you to pass a resolution tonight against this pipeline, and to stand together with your residents in the battle to come. For PennEast, while I'm against your project for 100 reasons, with two minutes, I'll ask one question regarding safety, as that's usually my number one concern. After doing a quick search, I was shocked at the number of pipeline explosions just here in the US, the most horrific of which to me was probably one in which two 10-year-olds were playing near a creek and had a fireball come shooting out them, basically burning them alive. They survived the night, suffering from the burns, and died the next day. I obviously can't read the whole list, but the following incidents I mentioned all involved 30-inch natural gas pipelines like the one you proposed to build. August 2000, a 30-inch pipeline exploded, killing five adults and five children, leaving two others in critical condition in southeast New Mexico. The explosion left a crater 86 feet long, 46 feet wide, and 20 feet deep. September 2010, a 30-inch pipeline exploded in San Bruno, California, killing eight. Eyewitnesses reported the blast had a wall of fire more than 1,000 feet high. October 2013, a 30-inch pipeline exploded near Rostin, Oklahoma. The flames were reported at 600 feet high. And February 2014, a 30-inch pipeline exploded in Nifely, Kentucky, flattening homes, burning barns, and causing two injuries, one person burnt. When it exploded, large rocks and sections of pipeline flew into the air, leaving a 60-foot crater. That pipeline in Kentucky was buried 30 feet underground. I believe you want to put this one three feet underground. I don't want to hear about safety standards, safety improvements, or as you said tonight, safety is paramount. Your industry talked about safety improvements after each one of these incidents, and yet the pipelines keep exploding. So when you're continually killing people, you really, and keep the process going, safety is obviously not paramount. Now, while you may target our preserved open lands because they're cheaper for you, this is still New Jersey. You can't avoid people and homes. So I want to know why you, PennEast, think that it's okay for you to kill our children, blowing them into pieces or burning them alive, just so that you can put cash in your pockets?
Yeah, I mean, I can appreciate your comments. I, I... I have no idea what the companies that operated those pipelines, how they operated them, what they did on an annual basis, what year they were built, what standards they built those pipelines to. All I can tell you is how we're going to build and operate this one. And, you know-
And you're going to be putting all of the safety information up on your website?
That's right.
And answer it, especially some of the details that we were-
Yeah, I mean, any detailed engineering questions, we'll be happy to answer them, how we're going to, you know, how we're designing the pipeline. You know, again, I'm not sure how or who operated all those pipelines, but that's not how we operate them.
You can understand our concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
As I stood in line, a lot of the questions-
May I have your name, please, in your order?
Sure. My name's Dan Berkaboni. I live at 35 Charlene, quite near Point B, as Carol Perturn pointed out, she's my neighbor. As I stood in line, most of the questions that I had in mind were asked, and I don't want to duplicate people's questions, so I have more comments than anything. First of all, I was a little dismayed to see a couple of the citizens in the township kind of shut down into questions. I would encourage the council to listen to these people because they have a lot to say. I would also make a statement that I would hope that more of the folks in the township would get together and kind of show the spirit that was shown during I-95. Ma'am, Lisa, your initial introduction and discussion was very elegant. I listened, I understood. You explained the regulatory process very clearly in a very cold fashion. These are not cold people behind me. I own a piece of property that is probably, according to the map you have out there, going to come within, let's say, 200 to 300 feet of adjacent property where the pipeline's going to come through. I bought that property knowing farewell that 1,000 or 1,500 feet away from me was a pipeline. But I also weighed that in with regards to safety and how far I was from a pipeline and what the impact could be on the value of the property that I purchased. I built a house and now I think you want to come and suggest that my safety should be put in jeopardy? Possibly. I understand the safety precautions. I also understand that everyone in this room, including you, sir, are human. I also understand that corporations stand for a very long time and we have careers for a very short period of time. So 20 years from now, the people sitting at this table will not be the people running that organization and none of us can know who those people will be. So I guess what I'm saying is more of a statement that I would like very much to see this township oppose this pipeline. I also'd like to know one question. We're going to hook up at Point B. Is there any other place away from a populated area that you can hook up into that pipeline and avoid this mess?
What point B? Oh, I understand.
Is anybody answering that question?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
You're going to need to use a mic.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the Point B for the longest time. I just had my aha moment. I assure you, where's the gentleman, I'm sorry. I assure you that we are trying and we will avoid as many populated centers as possible. I believe where we cross the river, it's, there's very little, if any, population that I'm aware of. So, you know, so all I can do is get in trouble by talking about generalities. What I will assure you is that we will take your concerns, whether we're talking about people, whether we're talking about structures, whether we're talking about endangered species. We are committed between now and throughout the end of this process to sit down and talk to you. And if you feel like this is, you know, "I'm just here checking a box," I assure you that's not the case. I am committed to this project. I'm committed to talk to you. If you want me to call you at 2:00 in the afternoon on Sunday, I will do that to talk through your concerns and give you as many specifics that I can today, tomorrow, and going forward. But, you know, talking in generalities is not going to be helpful for you.
I think he was asking a very specific question, and that is, is there another Point B that does not exist in this township? And by Point B, we're talking about the area where you hook up, the endpoint.
The endpoint.
Which is in Hopewell Township, two feet from his house, and he wants to know, "Can you put it somewhere else, like in California?"
The honest answer is maybe, but again, have we sent you a landowner? Okay, have you granted us permission? Then I can't answer that question for you tonight. As we go forward and we look at more information, I could be able to give you a definitive answer.
Again, again, there are a lot of people who want to ask questions and I apologize. I know, I'm not trying to cut you off. It's a very legitimate question.
I'm not trying to cut you off, but I don't like somebody telling me that they can't answer my question.
But we're going to-
I have a question.
Sir, we're going to get you an answer to your question because I want to know the answer to that too, and so does everybody else here. So we're not going to forget that question, believe me. We will make sure that they answer it. Okay? They will.
Nancy Valenzola, 108 Howard Way in Princeton Farms. My first question is, I understand this gas is going to be coming from the Marcellus Shale region, that I have done some research and found that it has very high levels of carcinogenic radon in the gas that comes from that shale region. I understand that would be extremely dangerous if there were any kind of leak anywhere along the way from Pennsylvania to New Jersey. Also, my research from the ANR, the Engineering News Record of 8/13/2014 states that the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration has 135 inspectors to oversee 2.6 million miles of pipeline in the United States. Also, in the past 10 years, there have been 117 incidents per year of, I don't know what an incident comes out to be, but apparently something is going on 117 times a year on the gas lines. And in the past 20 years, there have been 41 deaths, 195 injuries, and $1.6 billion in property damage. I do understand also that when there is damage to someone's property and they are paid by the gas pipeline, by the gas companies, that they have to sign a non-disclosure statement so that nobody really can find out what happened on their property and why they were paid. Do you have any comments about that?
Are those all your questions?
Yes.
I mean, as far as the non-disclosure statement, I mean typically there's one that's in the right-of-way agreement for the duration of construction or to the, you know, once the pipeline is in service, again, it's your property. You can do with it what you want, you can talk about it with whom you want. If you don't want the disclosure statement in your agreement, you can ask for it to be taken out. We've done that in the past, so it's not necessarily a requirement. It's typically when we're out talking to landowners about a project, it's not necessarily for the disclosure from one resident to another. It's to prevent the project being heard of to other pipeline companies that may consider it a competitive project. That's all.
And what about the carcinogenic radon in the Marcellus?
That's the first I've ever heard of that.
That's the first time you've heard of that?
So you're going to be reviewing this question with all the facts-
Sure, yeah, we'll look into it.
Not tonight necessarily.
Sure, yeah.
Do you have something in writing you can give us to make sure we're answering your questions specifically for that?
You can have this, but I don't-
If you don't mind.
I think we'll be able to get you information about those details. Okay. I've heard of that too. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Joe Connell, 103 Jameson Drive in Pennington, and my question relates to safety as well. And Lisa, you mentioned something in your talk, and Dante, you mentioned that you will be going above and beyond safety. My question is, Lisa, you mentioned something about perhaps rerouting based on groundbreaking of a new school. I'm wondering, is a 30 or 36-inch pipeline safe enough that it would be placed and approved to be placed as close to a hospital or a school as it will be placed near the homes here in Hopewell Township? That's my first question.
Could you ask all of your questions?
And second question, Lisa, you mentioned something about co-locating. True or false, yes or no? After, or should this be approved to go through Hopewell Township, can we expect that other utilities will co-locate along your route in the future?
So, so we do have, and I can't remember the exact location, but we are aware, and this is one of those trade-off things. We came across one specific issue and I can't remember exactly what it was. And so the scenario was to move the proposed route on the other side of the road. And guess what? On the other side of the road was a hospital, or at least where a particular hospital was looking to expand in the out-years. So again, that's one of those examples where we continually try to balance, you know, what factor or what feature do we try to avoid? I can tell you, we're going to try to avoid, we're going to try to avoid schools, we're going to try to avoid hospitals, we're going to, all of those things typically take place in large population centers. So those are some of the factors that we'll be looking at as we define the route. And I can tell you, so there was a scenario where there, in this particular pipeline project, there was a high school that had just done the groundbreaking and we weren't aware of it, and so we already made a decision to reroute.
And just to kind of add to that, yes, there's certain design requirements depending on where your pipeline is. It doesn't mean that you can't build it near a hospital or a school. The requirements just become, there's a larger margin of safe that's built into the pipeline when you do that. So when you're running through a community or a development, the design factor will be predominantly the same as it would through a hospital, depending on how densely populated that development is.
How about above and beyond the safety factor then?
Yeah, so typically, when you do the design calculation, you'll throw in the safety factor, it'll tell you how thick your wall thickness has to be. We don't just take that wall thickness and that's what we use. We'll take that wall thickness and add a larger safety margin on top of that and have a pipeline that actually has a thicker wall thickness than what's required.
And then your other question about co-locating, that's, you know, so we kind of develop our right-of-way, but there isn't anything that prevents another company or an expansion to come in, but they have to follow and meet the same criteria that we had. So if the space is just not large enough for another type of infrastructure, you know, sewer pipes, Comcast, you know, cable lines, that kind of thing, then they wouldn't be able to meet the criteria.
And again, if someone else was interested in doing that, they would have to come before you and ask you for, we can't give them that permission. It's still your land, you would have to get permission, give them permission to do that.
I want to make sure that all of you, if you haven't already signed in, if you could please give us your name and your address and your emails if you want to be included in the discussion that we're going to be having about when the next meetings are and that kind of thing. So please let us know who you are if you're here. Thanks. Yes.
My name is Jess Needver. I am an organic farmer on preserved farmland at 80 Titus Mill Road in Pennington. And I had been coming here tonight thinking that I was more standing in solidarity for the other farmers in the township who had this pipeline plotted through their ground.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. However, it does seem that within the variation that you folks still might have with your pipeline, that my own certified organic farm could be in your sights. So that does bring open some more personal issues for me. In terms of exact questions, New Jersey preserved farmland in order to preserve farmers as well, keeping open all their options for use of their farmlands, which could include orchards. I want to know if forbidding trees being planted on the pipeline right-of-way would include orchards? I'm not done with the questions yet. I also heard Dante say that the pipeline was rated to be safe for 100 years, but a lot of us are going to have descendants here for longer than 100 years. And PennEast LLC is probably going to go out of business and go bankrupt at one point. This is just what happens with companies eventually. Who is going to take care of this when you four are gone? What law protects the rest of us when you're gone? And then the last question that I have is, what happens if every single one of the properties that you're requesting a right-of-way from in Hopewell Township refuses?
I guess let me try to answer some of the questions. When I mentioned that 100 years from now you could dig the pipeline up and it would look as good as the day you put it in, you could probably dig it up 500 years from now and it would look as good as the day you put it in because of the protection that you're basically putting on the pipe, the cathodic protection. You know, again, there's continuous surveillance on the pipe, there's annual surveillance that's done on the pipe, there's internal inspections that are done on the pipe. If there is a degradation issue, it will be addressed immediately. As far as, you know, what's going to happen with the pipe when the four of us are gone, you know, if there's no one that owns the pipe or that will be operating the pipe, it will be taken out of service. You know, although I don't know of many interstate or natural gas pipelines that have gone out of service when it's serving a community or a group of communities. There's a need for it, so if it were to go away, you know, that need would be in trouble. So there will always be somebody that'll be there to operate the pipeline. And I'm not sure there's a third question.
There was. What if everybody says no?
Oh, the orchards, yes. Yeah, I mean, that really is kind of the only caveat is that, you know, now, keep in mind that the corridor that's opened up to develop the pipeline isn't the corridor that has to be left to operate it. It's, the corridor that's needed to operate is much more narrow, approximately 50 feet. So, but, you know, we have to have the ability to conduct those surveys and access the right-of-way. In that case, you know, trees are considered something that would be an obstruction, so. But as far as farming the land, it can certainly be farmed as it is today.
And I think the last question we addressed, and we'll try to give you more specifics about the FERC process, because I-
Every landowner, if every landowner refused, every landlord.
I'm going to direct you, I will make sure you have the link to the FERC process. I think that's a better answer.
I think she's saying it wouldn't go too well for them.
The other, I do want to add to Dante's question or response about-
Orchards?
The orchards, the trees, you know, any trees or plants that have long stems, roots, that's something that we encourage or would allow along the active right-of-way, the final right-of-way. But, oh, to follow up on Dante's, a more, I guess, realistic scenario would be if PennEast Pipeline LLC, you know, decided that they didn't want to be in the pipeline business. The typical scenario is that the assets that we would have, you know, another company would purchase those, and as Dante mentioned, because of the use of the local distribution companies, that's very likely. But I also want to point out, there is also a regulatory process for taking a pipeline out of service. So again, there's, just as difficult it is to get into the pipeline business, it is to get out of the pipeline business, and that's through the FERC process as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kathy Connell, 103 Jameson in Pennington, and just moved here from California. And I, my question is, you seem surprised about the safety issues that one of the other people was speaking to just a few minutes ago and said you didn't know what company that was, but it wasn't PennEast. What is your personal safety record? What kind, have you had explosions? Have you had leaks? Have you had loss of life? I want to know what your safety record is and what are our risks? I mean, that's why we're here. You're bringing it so close to a neighborhood.
Well, I mean, I've, I've been with UGI Energy Services for nine years, and we haven't had any instances that I know of in that nine years. I can't speak for any of the other companies that are involved in the PennEast Consortium, but as far as Energy Services, that, that is the operating record that I'm aware of.
So how many of these other pipelines have you been involved in, in different places?
I'm sorry?
How many other, has, how many other pipelines has PennEast built in different areas?
Well, PennEast is a newly created company for this specific project, but the companies that are involved each have their own operating experience with, with natural gas and pipelines.
So do you know anything about the other companies that are directly involved with this new company, PennEast, that is going to come through our backyard?
I don't, but we can certainly get those answers for you.
I think those are excellent questions, and we need the safety records of all the companies that are in this new conglomerate called PennEast.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank the township for having this, what I hope is the first of many meetings, and we'll have many town halls and the opportunity to speak with environmental groups as well, so thank you. I would like to comment on what was just said about-
Could I, could I get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Patty Kronheim. I live on, in 204 Pennview, Pennview Drive in Hopewell Township. And it is proposed to go in Mr. Hanson's beautifully preserved fields, and the wonderful trails, and the Girl Scout bridges, and the Eagle Scout trails, and everything behind our property, and the property that so many people, you know, love to explore. But I want to refute what Dante just said. This is Pennsylvania up's UGI fine for Allentown explosion, 2013. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I, I don't work for UGI Utilities, I work for UGI Energy Services.
Excuse my error, and this new PennEast company, I'm sure there is, you're splitting hairs, but I don't have anything else to say, except that when these pipes are closed up, and when the Marcellus shale and the fracking gas runs out, and these pipes are closed up, and they use concrete to close them, and the pig, pig robots are gone, and PennEast is gone, generations from now, it could be 20 years, could be 30 years, could be 40 years, could be 100 years, but our children, our children's childrens are going to be left, and the township is going to be left with the cost and the pollution of cleaning up these pipelines when they corrode, and no one is watching them anymore, because those concrete barriers do corrode and they break, and there's a long history of that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Again, you're going to, you're going to get us the safety records of all of the groups that are related to this.
I'm sorry?
You're going to get the safety records of all of the groups that are, okay, I just want to make sure. Yes, sir.
194.
Yes, sir.
I'm Michael Purcell, 194 Pennview Drive. You folks, first of all, welcome to Hopewell. You guys mentioned that you conduct studies before and after, and in particular, you were saying this with respect to the underground wells that many of us have in the township. You said that you're going to inspect it before and after, so what happens when you inspect it after, and you find some kind of breach as a result of the construction? What measures are taken to restore wells if this happens? That's one question. My other question is, for Elizabeth Town Gas, you mentioned that this is going to expand your possibilities of different supply opportunities. I'd be interested to know whether Elizabeth Town Gas engages in the resale of gas to other companies, or is this gas supposed just for your clients? And my last question is, with the efficiencies that you hope to gain by providing a pipeline, what type of commitment is going to be made by PennEast or anybody who's part of the conglomerate for the advancement of clean energy?
That's all right.
I'll take the one about Elizabeth Town Gas. Elizabeth Town Gas is a local distribution company, so we're, they're retailer in the supply chain, so we only sell to residential, commercial, industrial customers, for their, for their use.
Elizabeth Town Gas customers?
Yes.
Okay.
The question about the water wells, you know, if, if there was a delta in the water quality results, we would, we would work with the landowner, and at our expense, whether that meant drilling another well, a deeper well, or, you know, doing whatever it took to clean up the water quality, we would make sure that the landowner was satisfied with the water quality before we left. Advancements in clean energy, I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that question, but, you know, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. We could certainly look into that question for you.
What I can tell you, and what we shared in meetings with some of the partners, I know at least half of the partners already have some investment in renewable projects, so we have some renewable assets at Energy Services, and I know talking to some of my colleagues at a meeting, they had the same, but we can provide more details about that. I can only speak to my company.
We're going to need to just break one second while we change tapes in the video. We want to make sure we capture everybody's comments.
My name is Heidi Willenius, I live at 93 West Prospect Street. I am on the border between Hopewell Borough and Hopewell Township.
You have to speak into the mic.
Sorry. My name is Heidi Willenius, I'm at 90, thank you, 93 West Prospect Street in Hopewell Borough, which is on the border of Hopewell Borough and Hopewell Township, so my property straddles both. And most of the questions that I came to this mic with have been answered, so I, I just leave you with primarily a comment, which is, to be quite frank, I'm not interested in the rerouting of this pipeline. I'm not interested in having this pipeline exist. And I, I don't, I don't want you looking into Bucks County farmlands, I don't want you looking into other organic farms. I don't believe this pipe, because the creation of this pipeline will create more of a demand for more fracking in the Marcellus Shale region. And the more, the more natural gas that you're extracting from the Marcellus Shale region, that's less demand for renewable, clean energy sources. So I ask the people behind me and the people in front of me, just to think for one moment about if all the money that PennEast is sinking into this pipeline went into clean, renewable energy, what that would mean. And I speak mainly to the people, to the people in front of me here, and to the people behind me, because if we sit here, a lot of, I thank everyone for coming today, because it means that we are taking time out of our day, we realize how important this is. If we just sit and talk about how horrible this pipeline is, PennEast will push it through. But this is Hopewell Township, we have fought 95, we can fight this pipeline, but I ask that we fight it not just for Hopewell Township, that we fight it for this entire country and for our entire planet. Thank you. And, and just a, one formal request to the Township Committee, I, it would, for you to please pass a resolution, if it's not necessarily tonight, but in the near future, formally opposing this pipeline on behalf of your residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Niedmer. I live at 1 Trimmer Avenue in the Village of Titusville. I want to thank the Township Committee for having this open public forum. I came here to listen and learn, and I hope that you came here to listen and learn from us as well. My question is, I know that governments have the right of eminent domain, but I'm wondering, how does a private company get the right of eminent domain? Who provides that to a private company? And why does PennEast have that right? My next question is, what is the average compensation that is provided to landowners for a right-of-way? My next question is the same question that Jess had, what happens if every property owner in Hopewell Township contacted by PennEast says no thanks? I know the question has been asked by others, but I think it needs to be asked every time. My next question, and I'm going to use the word "proposed" in front of "pipeline," because I honestly don't think the word "proposed" has been used enough tonight, how will the proposed pipeline cross the Delaware River, and what impacts will it have on the flow of the river and the condition downstream? The Delaware River, I believe, is the longest free-flowing river east of the Mississippi, and I would be very concerned with how that impacts what we have. I have two more questions, this one is directed to the Township Committee. Is it possible to have a public referendum on this project put on the ballot? And my last question is, if everybody in Hopewell Township votes no, does that referendum get listened to?
I guess before Lisa gets into the, the right of eminent domain, I can just talk a little bit about, about the Delaware. We've crossed several rivers, and the method that's used to cross the river doesn't impact the river at all. We don't enter the river, we, we cross it with a process called horizontal directional drilling. We usually start and stop at a location that's well outside of the river limits. Oftentimes, it can be 900 feet away from the river, and it exits on the other side anywhere from 400, 500, 600 feet away from the river. It's, it's not impactful to the river, it's, as you would if you were to open cut the river. But we are working with the Delaware River Basin Commission to do it in the best way possible. But currently, the proposed method of crossing is horizontal directional drilling.
So, the answer to, I don't know if it was your first question, but I think it was like, close to the beginning and the end, and it was about the, the eminent domain, I'm sorry. So, again, what I will say is, I'll encourage you to go to the FERC website, and I thought there is a very, because it's difficult for me to keep repeating myself, I think you should go to a third party or go to another resource that will give you the ins and outs about the process. And there is a document, I was looking in the frequently asked question, there is a document on FERC's website, and it's something like, the title is something like, "I'm a landowner, and there's a proposed pipeline in my neighborhood, now what?" It's a, it's a long title. I strongly encourage you to go to work FERC's website, the address is in the frequently asked questions, you know, acquaint yourself with the process. But to answer your first question directly, that had a little special twist to it, FERC is the, in this case, the only entity that could give us the eminent domain process. And so, this two-year process is that, you know, those steps that we have to go through, and, you know, all the things that we have to meet all those requirements to get that at the end of the process. I lost track of her, but I just encourage you to look at that document, and that could probably better explain what your rights are, what's the role of FERC, and, and what communities can do, whether at, you know, from a governing body, or someone who's impacted along the website, or the proposed pipeline, what your rights and responsibilities are.
We have, it looks like 10, at least 10 more people who have not yet asked questions. So I want to make sure we get to all of you who have not yet asked questions, so, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Rob Gagin, I live at 206 Pennview Drive. My questions are more financially based.
You have to speak into the mic, sorry.
Certainly.
Thank you.
My questions are more financially based. First question is, this is a billion-dollar project, how much money have you invested into up until this point in the name of the sunk cost theory? Number two, this PennEast Pipeline LLC was just created in August, incorporated in Delaware. What were your motivations for incorporating in Delaware when there's no physical presence in Delaware? Number three is, has any pipeline project at this current stage been denied by FERC? And my fourth is just to comment to everyone here, I think we need to have our focus on FERC. They seem to be the people who are going to be able to stop the pipeline. The pessimistic side of me says that the best we can really hope for is to reroute it, but focus on FERC, or we are FERCed. So, answers please.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first question?
Sunk, sunk costs?
Sunk cost.
Yeah.
This is a billion-dollar operation, this project has an estimated billion-dollar cost.
What have you invested?
How much have you invested in so far? And maybe to add on to it, for the Hopewell Township area specifically, how much of that billion dollars does that represent? If we're enough of a thorn in your side, will you move out? So, I want to know how much you're invested at this point.
I can't, I can't answer how much we spent today.
Do you have to speak into the mic?
Yeah.
I can't answer how much we spent to date on the project. You know, we've been working on doing some of the desktops, you know, we've hired consultants.
Okay, if you can't answer that now, that's fine, we'll leave it with the group here. And what I think is why I think that question is important, is to determine just how far along you have made it here, and if you've already spent $100 million, you may feel like you're too deep to turn back. Next question, Delaware LLC, motivating factors behind that.
That's another, none of us are business development people here, so we'll have to get those folks to answer that question for you.
Fair enough, move on, next question.
Yeah, and then, I think you asked if, if the FERC has denied any part of the process so far.
Yes, okay, so it seems like a very, I don't have the numbers. It seems like a very small percentage of these pipeline projects have been denied by FERC. You are in early stages of this. You know, are you, are, what, I'm just trying to find out how many projects have actually been denied, to kind of give us an idea of what our chances are of defeating the project entirely.
I mean, I-
Okay, so you don't have the answer.
Well, all I can say is, we haven't engaged FERC at this point, and we intend to do a pre-filing with FERC on October 1. That will start our engagement with FERC. So I really think they've had an opportunity to give an opinion at this point, so.
I think, I think he was asking in general, how many are, how many projects similar to this have been turned down?
I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of head scratching, so we'll just leave it for an answer that you leave with us, them, and it doesn't need to be answered right now, you know, 2017 is a long-term project, so. Next question, Delaware LLC creation.
I'm not a lawyer, but my general take of creating an LLC in Delaware is for confidentiality, tax aversion, and somebody else would have to be a lawyer to chime in with a multiple, multiple of reasons for Delaware incorporation.
I'm sure we'll have plenty of lawyers looking at this.
All right, again, so that's it, focus on FERC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, go ahead, please.
Okay, yeah, good evening, I, my name is Anne Hayton, and I live at 4 Spring Hollow Drive in Hopewell Township. I want to also thank you for holding this forum to allow us to come out and hear more about the project and express views. I have two questions that are more backdrop questions, I think.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yes, I'm sorry. The first one is related to, I'm concerned about the proliferation of pipelines in general, and so this is directed toward the utilities. What, you know, how many other pipelines are in the planning stages in this area through New Jersey?
Could you ask all of your questions at one time?
Yes, and the second question is actually, the first one that came to mind when I was listening to your presentation, is usually when there's very large projects done, you first have to do a feasibility study and look at your best options for trying to get your job done. And I'm wondering whether you've done a feasibility study, what kind of criteria you used for evaluating your options, and where that feasibility study is, so that we can review it. it. Is that it? Yes. Okay, thank you.
I'll handle, I'll take the first one, and Bernie, if you can follow up with the second one? And that's, and the answer to the first one is simply, I don't know for the entire state of New Jersey. You know, that's something that we can do some research for you, but maybe some of the resource agencies can provide that for you. And then, the second question.
Just let me ask one question to clarify, so I answer correctly. We're not the marketers, business development here, so I wouldn't have an answer for you on, you know, what they looked at feasibility-wise. But if you're talking on environmental issues, the critical issue analysis alternatives that were evaluated, is that the direction of your question?
It is along those veins, but it's not limited to that. So, basically, looking at, you know, what other alternatives are available to reach your goal, which might be moving gas from one point to another. It looks like you've taken the straightest path possible, but perhaps, you know, using other avenues that are already exist. I know that you did talk about co-locating, but I'm wondering if a serious feasibility study was done with criteria, you know, whether the utilities routinely do that. I'm unfamiliar with your process, so I wanted to know about that. So, perhaps, if you don't have an answer tonight-
I can answer part of that for you, and tell you more's coming. As one of the key parts of the FERC filing is a purpose and need. You have to articulate that to show a purpose and need, which is, you know, some of the backbone, as you put it, for a feasibility study. On the environmental side, there's been an ongoing critical issues analysis of alternative routes and how to, you know, get from point A to B. That's been ongoing for a number of months. It's still in the works. That will also, all that detail will be one of the first elements that's filed with FERC within 30 days of starting the FERC pre-filing process. You put in a Resource Report 1 draft, and you put in alternatives. That alternatives, you know, goes through what you've looked at as part of the critical issue analysis. That continues to build and be expanded upon through the, you know, pre-filing process, and then you get Resource Report 10, which is your full alternatives analysis, you know, looking at all the different options from clean energy, you know, on through to no build, no action. All of those have to be explained in detail in Resource Report 10.
Can I have a follow-up question, just?
We really-
Okay.
If you could wait.
That's fine.
Okay. Sorry. But we are keeping track of these questions, and we'll give you lots of time to answer. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name's Maya Van Rossum. I'm the Delaware River Keeper. My organization is the Delaware River Keeper Network, and we work here in Hopewell and throughout the entire Delaware River watershed to protect the river and all the streams that feed it and all the ecological systems that are here in the Delaware River watershed that we all value so much. Unfortunately, at the Delaware River Keeper Network, we have experienced firsthand in the past three years the incredible level of devastation that is, has been inflicted by 11 pipeline projects, either new pipeline projects or expansion projects, that have cut through portions of the Delaware River watershed, including cutting under the main stem Delaware River, which did do an incredible level of damage and harm, and if you're unaware about, of that, you better get educated, that have inflicted an incredible level of harm to wetlands, to creeks, and to communities. We have worked with the communities that have suffered the irreparable and enduring devastation that pipeline projects like this one bring and leave behind. We also work with the communities that suffer, suffer the environmental, the health, the economic, and the overwhelming devastation that shale gas extraction has inflicted. The shale gas extraction that this pipeline project will not just support, but will induce and will increase, increasing the number of communities that are suffering the devastation. In Pennsylvania, they are not getting the profits from shale gas extraction. They are getting the devastation, the sickness, and the harm that it brings. We are all suffering because of shale gas extraction and infrastructure like this that is cutting through our communities. What you have represented this evening in your slides and in your verbal representation is not accurate or truthful on many issues with regards to these pipeline projects and the level of harm they bring. Once a pipeline is cut, the land is not restored to the condition or the use that pre-existed the pipeline. That is absolutely untrue and false, and nobody should believe it. So, my question to you is, will the Penn East Pipeline Company, in all future representations, fix your slides so that you're telling the truth? Including providing pictures to show people in communities like this the devastation that you are not just going to bring as you engage in your construction cuts, but the devastation that you are going to leave behind once you leave their community? You're not going to stick around to make it okay. We've watched it time and time again with these pipeline projects. You cut your path, you do your damage, you get your profits, and you only chime in when the regulatory agencies are fining you or tell you you need to come back and fix something that you broke. The Delaware River Keeper Network, New Jersey Sierra Club, Clean Air Council, Berks Gas Truth, Pipeline Safety Coalition, and many others are standing opposed to this project. We are standing individually, we are standing collectively, and we are standing with all of you who also want to oppose this project. So, if you want information about how you can get involved with us, go to the Delaware River Keeper Network or the New Jersey Sierra Club websites. Come get my business card afterwards, and we will show you the path, the best path you have to try and defeat this project for your community. And I will also encourage you, please don't battle to say, "No pipeline in my community, but the pipeline's okay if it's in somebody else's community." If that is your message, if that becomes your message, I guarantee you, all the other communities that you're fighting to put it in will be fighting to put it right back into your community. And when you're busy bickering amongst each other, "Who's going to win?", they're going to win, because they're just going to sit back and wait till you pick the path for where their pipeline project goes. So, it's really important that we all stand together in defense of our communities and our environment against this project, and that we stand united. So, I encourage you to do that. It's also important that part of our message is no shale gas development. If we don't have shale gas development, we don't have pipelines. If we don't have pipelines, we don't have shale gas development, and we're all better protected. So, I encourage you to include that in your messaging. And for the map, I don't have a map of the state of New Jersey, but at the Delaware River Keeper Network, you will see a map of the 11 pipeline projects that have cut through portions of the Delaware River watershed in just the last three years, including the one that cut up through Pike and Sussex Counties under the Delaware River using the HDD method that caused incredible harm to the upper reaches of the watershed, enduring harm that is still there. And you can also learn about the seven other pipeline projects, including this one, that are also proposed to cut through our watershed, creating cumulative impacts that are going to harm us all. So, I thank you all for being here. I oppose you, and I thank you for listening.
Mister, we were running out of time, so I would encourage you, please, to keep it short. And you're not speaking for the Environmental Commission.
My name is Ray Nichols, otherwise known as Horatio Barnes Nichols. I live at 412 Federal City Road, Pennington, New Jersey, and I am speaking for myself and my wife and my friends, not the Environmental Commission, Mrs. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll thank you to remember that in the future. But I also need to thank you and the rest of the committee and the township staff that organized this meeting, and I thank you all for doing your job and coming here tonight. I didn't know anything about this project. I've been hearing about lots of other projects, pipelines, and as, I want to thank the Delaware River Keeper for pointing out the total number of projects that are currently in the pipeline or under construction that are designed to do the same thing that Penn East would like to do. And I understand that Penn East is an LLC or limited liability company, which is great from the perspective of the people who've invested in it, because it limits their individual liabilities. And by incorporating in Delaware, you are further limiting your liabilities by having laws that protect you from identifying things. But we have a few questions, which somebody up here ought to be able to recognize tonight. You indicated, or this paper that you handed out, indicated that NJR Pipeline is going to be an equity owner in Penn East LLC. And your website today showed that PSENG has a 12% equity investment in this project. What are the other corporations bringing to this project? And please be specific. I also see that, which of them are also investing in modern, intensive, high-energy hydraulic fracturing, which has not been around for 65 years, as is represented? The modern hydraulic fracturing that we're so concerned about is a relatively new process, and it's much more damaging than the old-fashioned one. And we're seeing that hydraulic fracturing, regardless of how it's done, is a major problem throughout this country. I was glad to hear you say that you intended to test the well water of everybody's existing wells along the pipeline. That's very reassuring. One of the problems with the companies that have been drilling is that they have not been testing in the Marcellus Shale region, the wells of the people near the, near their proposed wells, so they're able to say, "Oh, no, we didn't do it. There's no proof that the gas that is coming out of your faucet and can be ignited is due to artwork." So, please, this township has a long history of transparency in the way it does business. We would appreciate it if you're coming into our community, that you also be totally transparent, totally honest. Give us the downside as well as the upside. Back to the present and to the township. Transco is currently conducting work in Blackwell Road at the proposed terminus of this project. What's going on and why? Next question, why was that point selected as the endpoint? And why was the beginning point, your A and B points that you need to connect, why were they selected? And if you are going to file that information with FERC in 30 days or 90 days, you ought to have it available to us tonight.
Mr. Nichols, there are many other people behind you. You've got two minutes, and you've already almost-
I'll just ask more questions then. Regarding restoration, since you indicated that subsurface, yeah, since you indicated that horizontal drilling is going to be used to go under the Delaware River, will you also use it to go under all the miscellaneous streams that feed into the Delaware River between the starting point and the endpoint?
Mr. Nichols-
Will you use it to go under wetlands, as can done?
Mr. Nichols, there, I think-
Two more questions.
That's it?
No.
Okay, that's it.
Regarding restoration, will a subsurface hydrology be restored? And if so, how? That's a major problem with wetlands that are perched on bedrock, which is very near the surface throughout North Jersey.
All right. Are there any-
Thank you. Oh, one last question. I'm sorry, I did say I had two. You indicated that 84% of the proposed 100 billion cubic feet that this pipeline is going to be capable of transmitting, unless you decide to enlarge it to 36-inch diameter, is committed, however, to go to New Jersey customers. But that leaves 0.16 billion cubic feet committed to somebody else. Who? And will it go overseas? Is there a possibility it will go overseas? Thank you.
There are very specific questions, and some of them are redundant questions, so unless there's a particular one that you really feel a need to answer tonight, that's great. Otherwise, we'll have all of the answers on the web.
I'll answer two of those that are very short. AGO Resources is an equity partner in the pipeline, just as PSEG, New Jersey Natural, and South Jersey. Elizabeth Town Gas is a customer of the, of the pipeline.
And then, the rest of the answers, you're going to-
And I think the other important-
You have to speak into the mic, sorry.
The other important thing to point out, that remaining 16% is planned to use in Pennsylvania and other resources here in the region. None of this is planned to be exported to other locations, New England or out of the country.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Jackson. I live at 224 Colt Street in Brandon Farms. My comment and my question is directed towards the committee. I believe that advice from a lawyer, more than likely retired, because if it is a currently practicing lawyer, they might eliminate a lot of their customers if this particular lawyer specializes in pipeline land access. And I believe that a lawyer like this would be essential for negotiations by the township as well as for residents. If residents sign a non-disclosure agreement during negotiations, they won't be able to tell others about the process, compensations, terms, et cetera. Therefore, it makes for a one-sided negotiation. My question is, has the township started to formulate a plan for any future negotiations with Penn East?
Tonight is the first night, and we have not yet formulated any plans for that.
Is this something that you have thought about on your own privately?
Is it something we should have thought about?
No. Is it, not, should you? Is it something that you might have been thinking about on your own?
To hire an attorney?
Yes.
I think we've definitely had discussions about hiring an attorney.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Waltman. I'm the executive director of the Stony Brook Millstone Watershed Association. We're headquartered at 31 Titus Mill Road in Hopewell Township. Personally, I'm a resident of Hopewell Borough. I have just a general comment and a few questions. No surprise, after sitting through a lot of questions and answering, and this is a community that really cares about its environment, it cares about rural character. If you win, if you want to win an election in Hopewell Township, you better say you're for preserving the rural character of this area. And I'm pretty sure every single one of you up there has done that. I want to thank you all for arranging this. I want to thank the representatives for coming out tonight. And most importantly, I want to thank all of you in the audience. This is critical issues. And, you know, this is a community that's invested literally millions of its own dollars in preserving open space, countless hours, and this isn't a partisan issue in this town either, countless hours in trying to adopt the strongest local environmental regulation it can. This is really a highly prized value in this community. So, I just have a small handful, five, I hope I can get away with five questions. And some of these are prompted directly from reading your frequently asked questions that you had on your website. And I want to thank you for providing as much information as you have. So, the first question relates to a statement in your frequently asked questions. And in this area, you're discussing the benefits to communities from the sighting of a pipeline. And I'm just going to read directly. It says, "Most important, pipelines play a major economic development tool as energy-intensive industries and facilities look to locate their operations in areas near natural gas pipelines." So, I guess, in all honesty, my first question is, which specific energy-intensive industries do you think your pipeline would attract to the Hopewell Valley? The second question, you indicate, again, in the FAQs here, that FERC requires operators to obtain both the federal certificate of convenience and necessity, as well as various state and local permits. And again, having, having just told you that this is a community that's invested a lot of time in adopting ordinances, I'd like to ask you if you would commit tonight to complying with these painstakingly achieved local environmental measures if this pipeline, in fact, were to go through. The third question I have relates to environmental features, and you have said several times tonight that protect- And you have said several times tonight that protecting the most outstanding environmental resources from your activity is a high priority for you, which we appreciate hearing. New Jersey has been particularly active in identifying high-quality streams. And so we have this whole program for reviewing streams and designating certain streams of outstanding natural and other values as category one, okay? I believe there's at least three. And if anybody quizzes me and I fail a test, I should be ashamed of myself. But I believe there are three of these category one streams in Hopewell Township. And so I'd like to ask you if you would commit to avoiding such streams if, in fact, this pipeline were to go through Hopewell Township. The fourth question is about restoration. You established frankly what I think is an impossible-to-achieve goal. So I guess I kind of commend you for that. But it says that impacted land will be restored to its original use and condition. And I guess my question there is, who's the arbiter of whether, in fact, your restoration would achieve those goals? Is that in your own determination? Is there a public process? What's, who's the referee in that? And then the fifth question relates to the easements themselves. I think I heard you say that, well, it was a question about co-location of easements. And I'm wondering, 5A, is it in your power, in fact, to preclude further use of easements? Again, assuming this all goes through. And B, would you commit to not selling to other commercial entities within rights of ways? Again, this is piled up on a big pile of ifs here. But the question is, you know, if this thing went forward, there's a pipeline right-of-way, pipeline comes through it, I believe it's in your power to say, "You're not going to sell these right-of-ways to anybody else who might want to run another pipeline or power line or who knows what." Would you commit to not doing so?
That's it?
Thank you. I'm out.
Is there any, do you want to answer any of those? I know there were a lot of questions there. And again, we're going to ask you to answer those for us online, but...
And I'm looking at the list and none of them are easy to answer right away.
No.
But we can, we do have some answers that we can come up with.
Okay. So you are saying that you will be providing answers to those questions because none of them are easy. Where is Mr. Waltman?
Well, not quick.
Yeah, and not quick.
That's your fault.
But is that, is there one in particular you want to answer tonight?
You know, there's a lot of people that want to speak tonight. So I would appreciate receiving answers in writing later. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joe Mansick and I live at 114 Vine Road. Thank you for your patience. I have one quick question and a comment. My question is that the construction of the pipeline and its specifications, the answers talked about the safety aspect and that it was being overbuilt, if I understood that correctly. Is that also to potentially, in the future, provide the option to move more gas?
Is that the only question you have?
That's my only question. Okay. And my comment is, in the context of safety, you mentioned that you'll operate this pipe safely. But when a previous resident asked about the pipeline incidences and breakages, you had no knowledge of it. That did not make me feel very comfortable. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in speaking about designing the physical pipe itself, designing the thickness of the wall really has little to do with capacity of the pipeline.
Future capacity.
Future or current capacity. The diameter itself does, obviously. And that's some of the things that we were talking about today, that that's kind of still being evaluated depending on the interests and, you know, who is calling us and who's going to, who is going to be signing up for the project. But the physical calculations and wall thickness and yield strength of the pipe has little to do with capacity or future capacity.
Future capacity. Business is always planned ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie Compton. I live at 29 East Curless Avenue in Pennington.
You can't lower that?
I don't know.
Or at least tip it down or no?
Oh, tip it down. That's good. And thank you for the open space because we use it all the time. And I really don't want a pipeline going through there, but I have one question, two questions.
You have to speak into the mic though.
Two questions.
Thank you.
One is, have you heard about, you talked about your environmental impact statements, kind of, and I don't know what they're called. You called them something else. What's the timeframe that you're going to get those out to us or on your website? And the other question is, are you going to include in your environmental impacts study, I would call it, the atmospheric impacts of the wells that are going to do the fracking that are going to send the gas down the pipeline to this area that we really don't want to have in anyway? The National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration just came out with a study recently of the impacts of two wells out west that they studied for a while. I haven't looked at the study myself, but apparently there's methane leaks like crazy just in the process of this whole thing. I'm wondering, as a carbon footprint, why are we even thinking of going this route? Why can't we dot this line, dot this line with windmills? You could spend your $1 million, billion dollars, $1 billion, I can't even think of that much, on windmills and we'd all be much better off now and in the future. So please consider that township and please consider looking into those studies and including them in your environmental impact statement or study, as it should be, a feasibility study.
Any answers to those? Oh, are you going to answer?
Yeah, I'm trying to get this thing on. Once FERC starts the formal process in July of 2015 and they engage the third-party contractor to go through the NEPA to do the EIS, all of those documents are going to be, you know, once you start the process, FERC issues a docket number. You can subscribe online to get all updates, emails associated with the project affiliated with that document number. All the information will be posted electronically or you can request hard copies. Generally, they send out CDs now to cut down on the paper. There are formal review periods for the draft and for the final EIS that are specified. Those timelines will be laid out and, you know, communicated for everybody to know through the FERC process. In general, that whole process is between 300 and 360 days, once they get started. No, nothing starts until the formal filing is made in July 2015. That's when FERC assigns a document number and things get, you know, started in the review process.
We're going to make sure that this process is up online and everybody has a very clear understanding of what that is.
With respect to the wellfields, FERC requires that you look at cumulative impacts. Their recent directions to companies filing with their FERC filings is they want you to, on a county-by-county basis, identify any planned, active, abandoned, or, you know, even inactive wells that are within one-half mile of the, you know, proposed pipeline facilities. Those all have to be documented and evaluated as part of the process.
Thank you. Ms. Dresner? No, no, they've been waiting longer, so I'm going to let them go first. And people who have, I'm sorry.
Kathryn Dresner, 299 Pennington Titusville Road, Hopewell Township. I'm general counsel for Hopewell Valley Citizens Group. And I want to thank the township for holding this event tonight and for being a terrific partner in preservation of open space. I have several concerns. I understand the map you've provided is a proposed route only. However, I note immediately that it crosses at least three surface water bodies of the state of New Jersey that are protected by category one buffers. And I don't understand how you could do that with your sensitivity to environmental concerns because that's not allowed under the law of the state of New Jersey. It's just not allowed. I also note that you have proposed crossing at least three parks, state park, county park, local parks. How can you do that? These are well-established, open space that the public uses. It has priceless value. A lot of money has been invested in the development of these parks. I just find that your statement that you consider the environment to lack credibility, given the route you've already proposed, it just doesn't add up with your words. I have a few questions. There's been no comment about compression stations. I'd like to know, excuse me, I'd like you to tell the people here what a compression station is and how many have been planned for New Jersey for your pipeline. That's my first question. Second question is, how much land is disturbed on each side from the midline of a 36-inch pipe in construction? And what is the total right-of-way from the midline of a 36-inch pipe? And I'm sure I'll have more later. Thank you.
That's it for now?
Yep. No one's talked about compressor stations, so if we could, we'd like to address that. We're just buying time with you. No one's talked about compressor stations, so if we could, we'd like to address that. Dante or Bernie?
Yeah, I mean, the, again, the project is still currently being proposed. There are scenarios that have up to three compressor stations and as little as one. I'm not sure if any of them are in New Jersey. I don't think any of them are. No, okay. So none would be in New Jersey.
As proposed now.
Yeah, as it's currently...
But what is it though? What is it? What are they?
What is it? Well, so the physics of moving gas through a pipeline, depending on the volume, pressure is lost through friction as the gas moves down the pipeline. So as it gets to certain points in the pipeline where, you know, pressure A in the pipeline cannot exceed pressure B into the receiver, into the receipt point, you have to compress it in order to elevate the pressure to allow it to move. And so the compressor station really is a unit that takes gas from a lower-pressure side, compresses it basically with a piston or some other compressing feature, and discharges it at a higher pressure.
But is it, is it the size of a breadbox?
No.
Or is it the size of a bus? What is it?
It depends on the size of compression that's needed. It can be in a building the size of a home or the size of a warehouse, depending on how many units are needed.
And what is the, if we're talking just basically 100-mile pipeline, that's a nice round number. So if you're familiar with these things, you should know how many compression points you need in 100 miles.
Right. Yeah, so again, the different scenarios that we're running, whether it's a small amount, a smaller volume through a 30-inch pipeline or a larger volume through a 36-inch pipeline, the number of compressor units needed changes. It's different from one scenario to the next.
Is it affected by elevation or...
No.
Height or altitude or anything?
I mean, height and elevation, altitude can all affect the performance of the compressor, but it really doesn't, from a, you know, but it's really minuscule compared to the number of compressors that's needed to actually move the gas. Really, what drives the compression that's needed is suction pressure, discharge pressure, and the volume of gas that needs to be moved.
I know that there's, is Blackwell Road, is that letter B?
Is that a compression statement, station? What do you call them?
I'm not sure.
Going from A to B? What is on Blackwell Road now?
I don't know.
Do we know? Do we know, Paul?
I mean, it may be a compressor station, but it's not one that we own or operate. So I'm not sure what the question is.
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to tell us how many of these stations you're going to have?
Yes.
And where they're going to be located?
Yes.
And if they're going to be located anywhere near Hopewell Township?
Yes.
Okay. And the other question I think she had was how wide, how many feet from the terminus? I didn't write it down.
For a 36-inch project, typically the permanent right-of-way is 50 feet. And temporary right-of-way on top of that, that would be used for construction, is anywhere from an additional 50 to 75 feet. So the temporary would be, I mean, sorry, the permanent right-of-way would be what's maintained while the pipeline's in service. The temporary is left to go back and re-vegetate. Trees can be grown there, permanent structures can be grown there. It's really just needed for the construction period. After that, it's, it's no longer needed.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I can't do that because I can't hear you and we can't tape you. So if you have a question, you're going to have to come up. Sorry. But not now, you're going to have to wait. Sorry. And I believe that there were other questions that she asked, but again, we're going to send those to you and we'll ask you to respond to them. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kate Millsaps. I'm the Conservation Program Coordinator for the New Jersey Chapter of the Sierra Club.
I'm sorry, ma'am. You have to speak in.
Hi, my name is Kate Millsaps. I'm the Conservation Program Coordinator for the New Jersey Chapter of the Sierra Club. Thank you for giving this presentation tonight, but I have to say frankly, it was disappointing considering you guys are having your pre-filing application ready to go in about a week. There was a lot of information that could have been included, such as the compressor stations. And I would hope that the comments that were made tonight will be addressed in a timely fashion and that information will be included in future presentations so that we all don't have to go digging through a 100-page document to get the answers to very good questions that were asked tonight. So that's my first question. When we see the answers from tonight, if you could address that one. My second question was, how many landowners in Hopewell have been contacted for survey permission? How many landowners in New Jersey have been contacted for survey permission? And what number of those contacted have already agreed to grant you survey permission? Since you're not answering the questions, I do just want to clarify. Lisa had at two points in her statements, at one point she was talking about, "We like to start with a straight line from here to there, but if there's something that comes up," like you said, "something," or rough quote, "landowner completely opposed to the project," end rough quote, "the line would move." So is this true? If opposition is made to the project, will you guys reroute? And then later on, Lisa went on to say that if you deny survey permission, they will look at the, at opportunities and rerouting is one of them. So if enough landowners are opposed to this project, will you reroute? And what percentage or what number of those that you have contacted in New Jersey and specifically Hopewell Township have already told you no? Since you already have your pre-filing materials ready to go, how many, you have your preferred route, and then explicitly, how many alternative routes have you investigated so far? What, to clarify again, what are the revenue benefits to the municipality? Are there any tax benefits, any future pilot programs, anything like that, that would bring additional revenue into the township? Will property owners continue to have to pay taxes on the land that you guys own an easement on and operate industrial infrastructure on? I wish you could clarify your statements on how, since this is a transmission line, how you would connect local distribution lines along the route and how many of those requests by different, not just utilities, but different townships and potential customers would be granted. And then referring to the utility engaging in reselling gas, only Elizabeth Town answered that question. None of the other companies answered if they would engage in reselling the gas. When you talked about impacts to the Delaware River, you only talked about the main stem and using horizontal directional drilling. You did not talk about the impacts for clay leaks and how that can result in significant dissolved oxygen in the water bodies and potentially taking, threatening endangered species if they exist in that portion of the river. But you completely ignored and failed to address the impacts of erosion, compacted soils from construction, additional runoff into the river, and how those cumulative impacts on different parts of the watershed and different stems of the Delaware River will be exacerbated by this project. And then going... And then, going back to the question on climate change that was asked, how, not how will you look at it, how will you specifically mitigate the climate impacts of your project and the continuation of New Jersey's dependence on fossil fuel as a result of your proposal? The world leaders are in New York City as we speak, as you guys are giving this presentation on investing a billion dollars in antiquated infrastructure, and we need to be talking about how we're gonna move beyond this garbage that you're trying to sell us. So, thank you very much.
Did you want to ask that either?
There was one question, I'm not sure, before you leave, I'm not sure I totally understood. If I could get you to clarify for me, please. You were asking about along the pipeline routes, something about the townships that have asked for service, or am I misrepresenting your question?
Right, yeah. For example, we had the gentleman from Elm Ridge Park and Delaware Township specifically has asked if that would be a possibility, and you said that along from point A to point B, you had to not do a straight line because you would be connecting to different utilities. So, how are you proposing to provide access to those utilities from this transmission line? That's what I understood from your presentation, that you guys were going to be servicing utilities along the route.
True.
So, how is that happening on a high-pressure transmission line?
The transmission line doesn't serve.
You have distribution lines connected to that, so how are you proposing to connect those distribution lines to serve the utilities?
The distribution lines are the utilities.
All right. I don't want to get into a discussion because we have a few other people here who want to ask questions. If you have an answer, if not, we're gonna get.
Yeah, there are specific, there's a regulator station, so, pretty much the opposite of a compressor station, but it'll take the pressure from the pipeline, cut the pressure down to the pressure that the distribution company needs it at. Now, the size of those facilities aren't nearly as big as a compressor station because there's no external forces needed to do that. It's basically just a valve that cuts the pressure from a higher pressure to a lower pressure. And these are located throughout the local distribution company's network.
Did you understand the question? Do you understand the question now? Will you be able to answer it later?
Yeah.
Okay, because you had a lot of good questions, and I want to make sure that.
Can I just ask, if I can give you my card, you could send me. I'm afraid I didn't catch all of your questions, so.
Well, we'll remind you what your questions are. Believe me, we'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, you've been waiting for a long time. If you could move to the mic, and then you, sir. I want to make sure that everybody who has not asked a question yet can ask a question before.
Good evening. My name is Sadie Subb. I live at 46 Model Avenue, Hopewell, New Jersey, the borough of Hopewell. My question is, I'm not fully aware who the people are that are asking for this need of the pipeline. I don't understand if it's, like, people who live in the communities, or if it's people who will benefit from the dwindling resources of fossil fuel, because that's not gonna stay around, stay around for a lot longer. And as a young person, I think we should be more focused on alternative sources of energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any, could you respond, who's actually gonna use this?
To your question about use as a utility, and just speaking for Elizabeth Town Gas, we'll use it for our existing customers and future customers. And my presumption would be, though that's exactly what it is, is that the other New Jersey utilities are gonna do exactly the same thing.
One of the, one of the questions I have for you, sir, is, would you, not now, but as part of your answer, please let us know who you do service in Hopewell Township?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
My name is James Popick. I live at 10 Skyview Drive in Hopewell Township. So, your customers are homeowners, is that correct?
You're gonna need to ask all your questions at one time.
Okay, my questions are simple. I wanted to clarify who your customers are, and I'm interested, on the supply side, who are you buying the gas from? And what is the lifespan of the wells in general? Are we looking at 10 years, 30 years? Seems to me that the fracking gas wells are not that long-lived, so, you know, we could go through this big thing and be done with it in 10 years. Or am I mistaken on that? What's the lifespan of the wells?
I'll start with your first question. Our customers are residential customers, commercial customers, which would be like a dry cleaners, a McDonald's, a restaurant. Then, industrial customers would be, would be a bigger, a bigger user, say, a warehouse, a manufacturer, or someone of that, that nature. Your second question was, where do we get our gas? It's a variety of places. We get it from, we get it from the Gulf Coast, we get it from the West, I mean, we could get it from anywhere. Natural gas is a fungible product, and so, you could get, you get the product from.
We can't hear you, sir. We really, since we're recording it.
This particular pipeline is going from point A to point B. So, the gas that's going through this pipeline is coming from point A, correct?
Yes.
It's not coming from California, it's coming from Pennsylvania.
No, maybe I misunderstood your question. I thought you were talking about where do we get our gas now? This, yes.
No, no, we're talking about this pipeline.
Yes, this gas would come from Marcellus Shale.
Yeah. How, what's the average lifespan of those wells?
Of one well?
The average lifespan of, let's say, there's 50 up there. How long do those wells last? Because, once those wells are gone, there's no need for this pipeline.
So, again, if you don't know the answer, that's fine.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not sure I can answer that question.
But, but, but I think that's, it's a very good question, so, you know, we're gonna ask you to think about what the answer might be. Again, I'd like the people who haven't asked a question first, go ahead, ma'am.
I signed up for it.
Yep. You're gonna have to speak in the mic.
Hello.
You can raise it.
Oh, all right. I'm actually not a Hopewell resident, so I was hoping to wait for everybody else, but I wanted to ask you.
But then, you have to give us your name, anyway.
Yeah, my name is Fairfax Hutter, and I live at 67 Barberry Court in Lawrence Township, and I'm in walking distance of Hopewell. But I also am a taxpayer for land up in Luzerne County near Wilkes-Barre, so I'm familiar with some of these issues at both ends. And my first question is that a gas pipeline in loops had been expanded up in Luzerne and then down here in Hunterdon in Mercer County, they're in progress, the Stanton Loop in Hunterdon, and then the Dorance Loop up in Luzerne County. Now, why, if they were expanding then, and you're, and the line you're proposing is parallels the line that those are using, which I believe is the Transco line, I can't say exactly if they're about 20 miles apart, but they're two parallel lines cutting two huge swaths from northeast Pennsylvania into New Jersey. Why do we need a second line? Why couldn't this have been planned out properly ahead of time so that half as much damage is done as would likely be done? So, that's my first question. The other one is that vegetation management, you guys could say you might work deals to restore things to the way they were, but in our property up in Pennsylvania, we got a 248-acre gorge across from the electric utility run by Pennsylvania Power and Light, and I want people to know what the consequences are once there's an easement. My mother and her sisters, and I'm not sure when and how, gave a 50-foot easement to Pennsylvania Power and Light, and back in those days, all they imagined were that there were telephone poles would be going through across the gorge. And then, a couple of years ago, we were driving down there in January for a memorial service, and we found utility crews in the middle of the road, and they were cutting down nearly virgin hemlocks, a huge 50-foot swath. In the past, they never needed to do that. And you might think if an easement is granted and the damage is minimal now, you really cannot predict what might be coming down the pike later on. And then, what would prohibit you from deciding that you need to expand this line later, such as what happened up in Dorance and in Stanton, going to a 42-inch loop? And once there's a right-of-way has been granted, basically, the property owners are at the mercy of whatever you guys want to do and what FERC wants to do. Likewise, as far as vegetation management goes, everybody sort of passes the buck. PP&L told us, "It's not our problem, FERC mandates it." And they cut everything right to the ground, bare to the ground, and they periodically do that. And even some of the biologists for some of the utilities have told me confidentially that the vegetation management is way overdone, is overkill, and, but their advice is not listened to by the utilities who employ them. And the other thing is, the type of vegetation management can occur. I don't know if this happens with gas lines, but with electric transmission lines, there are literally are helicopter chainsaws. So, people who live here, it's potential, highly unlikely, could see a helicopter with a swing and chainsaw going down their property line. Likewise, the possibility of using herbicides may or may not be a possibility. But you, the landowners, the homeowners, do not have control over this now. A lot of this goes back to the Energy Policy Act of 2005 and the mistakes that were made.
Ma'am, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
All right. My one last point is that this proposed route goes through a lot, a huge contiguous forest in Pennsylvania, and likewise, some good forests in Hunterdon County and so forth in Hopewell Township. I talked to the North Branch Lands Trust and the Bear Creek Preserve next to them, which is 3,500 acres of solid contiguous forest with habitat that has, in some instances, potentially federally listed golden-wing warbler is up in that area, there are swamp barrens, there are scrub barrens. It's very special habitat. I just want people to know that it's a, the whole picture has to be taken in part, not just one municipality. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Jim Andrews. I live at 134 Hopewell-Wardsville Road, and I want to follow up a little bit on Jim Poppen's question on the expected lifetime of the Marcellus Shale gas fields and that at the current rate. And then, also, if we put in 10 times as many pipes that the Delaware Riverkeeper said, that there's 11 new pipelines being built, how long will it last then? And one more thing, what's the rush to get the gas out so fast? Let's save it for 50 years from now.
Any answers?
Well, I mean, I guess I can't speak for the other 11 projects. All I can say is that, you know, we're out here trying to meet the need of the people that have shown interest in this project, and that's kind of the direction that we're driving for at this point. You know, we can certainly find out historically how long Marcellus wells last. I don't even know if that number really is known since the drilling in the Marcellus is, I believe, fairly new, but I'm pretty sure they have projections on how long, you know, a well will last. I can tell that, I believe they're not drilling all of them at the same time, they're, they have a drilling plan that I'm sure they're, they're trying to implement, and so, when one well is drilled and used and there's a need for more, they'll drill another one. But I, I'm, we're not drillers, just to be clear, we're not drilling companies, we're in the pipeline business, so it's hard for us to answer those truthfully with accuracy, so.
Can you sign out?
I'm sorry?
Again.
We can certainly try, yes.
I think, I think the point is that you're putting pipes in our ground to pump something that will run out, no doubt will run out. Do we have a sense for when that's gonna run out, generally speaking? I think that that's something somebody's been looking at.
Sure.
The capacity that exists.
Fair questions.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jared Fleischer. I'm a board member of the Sauerland Conservancy, a local citizens group in East Amwell Township, although until recently, a Hopewell Township resident. My question is a technical one, just if PennEast were to build a 30-inch pipeline, as I understand is now proposed, rather than a 36-inch pipeline, which I understand is under consideration, are there any differences in the size of the right-of-way required, land disturbed, compressor stations required, or any other infrastructure concerns that, you know, a guy like me probably wouldn't think of, but, you know, you guys understand?
Yeah, I mean, again, going, it's a little, an iterative process. Going to a 36-inch pipeline would mean you have more volume, but typically, if the pressure drop is less, you would need less compression. So, there's, there's kind of a trade-off. There's less of a pressure drop, meaning you would need less compression, but you would be moving more volume, so you might need additional compression. But it's, again, the different scenarios we are running has, have anywhere from one station to three stations. And I'm sorry.
Any change in the right-of-way?
No, no, I'm sorry. There's no way I can hear you.
Yeah, the right-of-way width between a 30- and 36-inch pipeline doesn't change a lot. The construction equipment that's used for a 36-inch is very similar to the equipment used for a 30-inch, and as far as trench width that's needed, they're very similar. You know, we wouldn't, currently, we're looking for 50-foot permanent and anywhere up to, from 100 to 125 total for temporary.
Since this is all being, you know, answered in writing, even though it might be a small difference, can you specify exactly what the difference would be in writing?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, there's one other person, I'm sorry, I know you've been waiting patiently. One other person, you're the last person, and then, the gentleman who's already spoken.
Should I let him go?
No, no, no.
My name is Bill Clark, and I really only have one comment, and it's concerning the process hereafter. I'm really proud to be a resident of a community where all these people would get out and do what they've done, but the questions that are gonna be submitted and responded to, I presume in writing, I hope are not evasive, and there's, and a structure can be created whereby if that appears to be what's going on, that the township can, the township or the people can come back to these people and say, "You understand what I asked and you didn't answer it, if you understand what I'm saying to you." That's all I have to say. Hopefully, you'll not rely on oblique information.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Clark, like we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, this is one of many public forums that we'll have, and with, either with a township or a surrounding area, but as well, if answers to, when the answers to these questions come out do not satisfy your question, you can always go to the website and re-ask a question or ask the portion of the question that wasn't answered, and we'll certainly get back to you.
Better yet, if you're right before the people and they press you for the answer, you can speak to them rather than referring them to a website.
Well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name's Dave Erkaboni again. I live at 35 Sherolene. Lisa, I have one question for you, and I have one comment for the gentleman engineer that I apologize, but I, your name has slipped my memory. PennEast has taken, painstakingly taken the time to gather public information to allow you to know who to send survey letters to, whose property is within a certain distance from your proposed pipeline. I'm wondering if we can have that list made accessible to the township so that they may pass it on to whoever would be interested in putting some type of an organization together to organize our thoughts, because I think individually, we don't stand a chance, but collectively, we may have just a fleeting hope, okay? And so, and I think, I think it's, it would be a good thing if we were somehow be able to do that. Secondly, my comment, not a question, I head up a product development organization for probably one of the most regulated industries in this country. And I can tell you, the scientists and engineers that I've associated with over the years, regardless of the company I've worked for, have painstakingly taken care to understand the regulatory issues that are presenting themselves to all the companies in the industry that I, that I work in, and to understand the safety issues that have presented themselves so that we can avoid those regulatory issues, and we can certainly avoid those safety issues. So, quite frankly, we had three people step up to the microphone and cite news articles that cited some very significant safety events. And I was, I didn't know whether to be surprised or whether to be annoyed. And I was, I didn't know whether to be surprised, or whether to be annoyed, or whether to be, you know, just, I don't know, just throw up my hands and be aghast that you didn't seem to be aware that any of these even existed. And yet you can stand in front of us and say that you're taking the precautions necessary to make this pipeline safe. And in my mind, one of the ways to understand how to do things safer than what they have been done is to take an understanding of where the mistakes were made. And yet you stood there and weren't even aware of any of the incidences that were presented. And one of them was in 2013. Just a comment.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I didn't answer the question. We are certainly aware of the incidents. We're not aware of why those incidents happened or what took place around those incidents. We know that they are evaluated, and the industry puts out additional requirements when developing new projects, and we certainly follow those as a result of the findings that came out of those incidences. So we're cognizant of them, but I can't sit here and answer, you know, why they happened or, you know, what took place, you know, that led up to those incidences.
But wouldn't you want to know? So that you can make sure it doesn't happen to you?
Yes, sure, we do. And, you know, when findings come out and we're developing new projects, we certainly look at those so we don't make the same mistakes that were made in the past. So, and again, you know, we're currently, we're currently in the early stages of developing this project. So when we're looking at, we closely look at all the design standards that are currently available and follow those to the T. And like I said, we also go well above and beyond what's required, so...
Okay, well, it strikes me as concerning that you don't know why accidents happen and whether or not you can avoid those accidents in the future by making sure that you don't have the same thing happen to you. I can't believe you're saying that the industry doesn't share information about why things happen and that you just build according to some kind of standard, that it's given to you without any understanding for why you have a standard. So maybe I'm not understanding your answer?
Yeah, I believe that's the case.
I think we're talking specifics versus generalities. So specifically, I don't know exactly what happened in that accident. I can't give you the after-action report, and I can't tell you exactly what regulations took place specifically as a result of that incident. As an industry, we are required to follow the lessons learned. We do share across companies. We do share with our partners, whether it's, you know, in this particular case, it's pipeline safety type of conversation. The producers that actually produce the gas in the northern, they share, you know, lessons learned across their specific sector, and the same with downstream. So, you know, specifically, tonight, can we speak to the after-action incidents and the reporting, and what happened, and what we took back? The reality is, when there is an incident, FEMA, you know, the federal agencies that are required to regulate these type of activities, and some of the other agencies, they develop new standards, procedures, plans, protocols as a result. So it's even more, it's, you know, we take it upon ourselves to learn the lessons, but also what typically happens is there's an after-action. And that's the same case with safety, it's with homeland security. I mean, I can tell you, after 9/11, our industry, a huge spotlight was on it on some of the infrastructures placed within the area. So I don't want to leave the impression we don't know about those incidents, but I can't speak to those specifically tonight.
All right, thank you. I think you're the last, and hopefully...
Kim Robinson, again. It's come up several times tonight, the question of what would happen if everyone in the town denied survey access. And I just wanted to let the audience know that out in the lobby on the table that had the sign-in sheets, there are two pieces of paper out there, stacks of them. One is a letter, a form letter that you can take, just adjust it to your own circumstance, your own name and address. And that is a letter you would send certified to PennEast, either denying survey access or rescinding it if you have already given them access. The other form out there is a blank petition form that you can take and make copies, distribute it. And lastly, I would recommend that everyone, it doesn't matter if you got a letter or not, same thing for those letters, it doesn't matter if you got a letter or not, I would post your property with no trespassing signs, and you do have to get the kind that have your name and your address on them. They are available at Home Depot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hart, I think there was one, you had a question.
Just for in the writing, I didn't, whoa, I didn't hear anybody ask these questions. So you can put in writing, because it might take you a while. On your route to going through Hopewell Township, I noticed you skirt Trap Rock Industries, which is a quarry. And they do blast once in a while, and actually, once in a while, they haven't done any this year. They've just got a new license to keep quarrying for a few more years. So once in a while, they get a little over jealous with their dynamite, and it goes in, it shakes the windows in my store across the street, so it's not that far from your pipelines. About probably a quarter mile away or less. So look at that, would you please? And also, did you look at the route? It looks like you're going near the Amwell or the Malinary Pumping Station, and that's right on 202. I was wondering why you didn't look at coming right up the middle of 202, where it's between the two lanes coming up 202, and then right up 31, so you don't disturb any ground, any private land. I just wanted to know if you looked at that route. That's all I have. Just put in writing, that's all right.
Well, comment. First of all, I was taking notes on my phone. That's how I was taking notes. In case you saw me playing with my phone tonight, I was actually taking notes. Second of all, I want the public to be aware that there will be a transcript of this meeting, and that's how we're gonna keep track of the questions that were answered. I'm sure that if there's some names that we can't decipher, we will be reaching out to those people to make sure that we got their questions accurate. And once the answers come back to us, then we'll make sure that we actually got the answers to the questions that were actually asked, so that there's a good communication back and forth. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're not having a transcript.
Okay.
And being taped.
Yeah, he's gonna use it. Minutes, yeah.
Minutes and a tape.
Okay, minutes and a tape. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep. I won't move, so you're gonna have to lean in.
I have a question or two. This question was asked, I've been thinking about it all night, and one of the last questions was, the observation that, putting aside for the moment whether or not this pipeline actually gets built, but I was curious as to, since you parallel the Transco pipeline, what happened to the concept of co-locating? That question was asked, I've been thinking about it all night. It's on the materials that you gave out at the state ag meeting that I attended on September the 14th, I believe it was. And your red proposed pipeline parallels Transco's green pipeline, and you want to end up in the same place. So what happened to co-locating that I heard about during the presentation? That's my first question. My second question, again, putting aside the concept of whether or not the line actually gets built, but if the pipeline has to run, does it have to run through forests and farmlands and preserved areas and wetlands and environmentally, environmental wetlands and rivers? Can you put this pipeline under streets that already exist? And we don't have sewers under our streets, especially in the north county, in the north township. We don't have gas lines, because for the most part, we don't have gas. So that was my second question. Could you, if this actually has to happen, and I'm not prejudging whether it's going to happen or not, but what about the concepts of using streets? And thirdly, both, Alicia, during your presentation, you said that the Appalachian Trail caused the pipeline to be rerouted, and Bernie said that we tried to avoid easements. And my question is, how do we know this? Because you're not a transparent entity. You are a private enterprise. You don't have to be transparent. We do. But you're telling us that you did all these things that President Reagan would say, "We trust you, but we would like to verify." So my question is, will you be more transparent in showing us what you were thinking about, how you arrived at your current thinking, and be more transparent in your future thinking so that not just this committee, but all the residents who are affected by this proposed pipeline can understand what you're thinking about, which we can't verify, other than your statements that, "Trust us, we changed it." And while we'd like to trust you, we would also like to have an understanding of your thinking in why you propose this, if it gets built, and how that proposal was arrived at. So my question is, can't you be more transparent to the public?
Thank you very much. First, I want to say a couple of comments. Thank you for coming out, and thanks to the folks from Township for coming out as well. I heard a lot of good questions that spawned more questions for me. I do have two specific, but I think paramount, you heard, things about safety are concerned. Mr. Walton, Jim brought up a good point about some of our ordinances. I'm not sure you're aware that you start cutting down trees. We have a $2,500 per tree ordinance going on where you might, depending on which tree you cut. So you have to replace that tree. But by two questions, I don't think I heard tonight, or, and maybe slightly in a different variation. One is, if it's a 30-inch, 36-inch pipeline, we talked about if it gets shut down 30 years ago, it's no longer in use and sealed up. My question is, what if it's not sealed up? What else can that pipeline be used for that we're not thinking about today that would cause safety issues or concerns if we're not careful in the monitoring of it? My second is, and I think as Mr. Gagin asked the question about FERC, and that's what we need to focus on, I didn't hear the question asked. The name FERC kept being used, almost like a deity, "In FERC, we trust." And I'm a little, who is FERC? Their website, only rivals ours, in user-friendliness, because I looked, and I, I understand they're appointees, but who are the decision-makers on FERC that will be making this decision? Is it a random set of people who come through and look at it? Are there individual names that we can start talking to? All I just heard was FERC, 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 and I really don't understand who these people are, and I need to know names of decision-makers. Thank you.
Any answers to any of those? Do you have any answers to any of those questions tonight, or...
We could put it in writing.
Yep, okay. All right. I think we're done for tonight. I appreciate, as all the members said, we appreciate you coming out and staying as long as you have. This is one meeting of many that we're gonna be having over the next few months. And again, you're gonna be provided with a list of questions that we've asked tonight, because we have our engineer who's been taking copious notes. So we'd appreciate it if you would be able to provide some answers to those in writing. We'll put them up on our website, and I know that you've given us a copy. Is that presentation going anywhere? We're gonna get that, so we can put that up on the website as well. And again, if there's any questions that you haven't answered, that you want answered, send us an email. I believe that they've also said that you can send them emails as well and ask them or call them for answers to questions. But certainly, there will be something on our website as soon as we have it transcribed, and their answers will be there. And this is, again, this is the first meeting of many, hopefully. And thank you for coming out and staying so long. Appreciate it. Thanks. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.